Welcome, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, July 11, 2017. This is our regular city council meeting. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall, and our meeting is starting at 6:00 PM for our viewing audience. For the record, we do have a quorum. All members are present, and we'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start off, please, with a moment of silence. And Chief Pond, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pardon me. We're going to move on. We've got recognition, some announcements, and then we'll move on to the presentation, Chief. Okay, thank you. Next on the item, we've got recognition, which there are none at tonight. We do have a presentation that we'll get to with our Friends of the Fire Department Scholarship, and we'll get to that in a minute, or Close Session Report. Mr. Petroni?
There was no sort of close session, so there's nothing to report.
Great, thank you. And Mayor, Council, member reports and announcements, and I just want to introduce our interim City Manager Marty Lamelli. Thanks, welcome to Morro Bay as, well, you're already, you've been here for a while, but just want to say welcome and glad to have you.
It's an honor to be part of this community and to serve this community. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marty. And I'm going to put another shout-out to Craig back there. He's got his head down into the computer, but Craig, thanks very much for your role as acting during the transition. Thanks for all your work.
Head down, but always listening.
Head down's always listening. And always a quick wit. And always a quick wit. And with that, we'll start on announcements, and we'll start at the end with Ms. Marlos McPherson.
I have no announcements. Thank you.
Great. John?
Two quick ones. One, I'm having an individual council person, town hall meeting, 6:00 PM, Monday, the 17th, at the Senior Center in the main area there. It will go from 6:00 to 7:30, open forum. Any questions you might have? I will start with an overview of the 218 process, not anything current, but how it works, how it worked last time, and where your dollars are with regard to that. And then, open forum. Second, unfortunately, I was the victim, my establishment pharmacy here in town, of a robbery last Monday. And it's pretty symptomatic of what's going on in our country with addiction and some of those issues. But I wanted to note and give significant accolades to our police department. My alarm in the pharmacy went off at about 6:08 AM, and the Morro Bay Police Department, three officers were on scene within two and a half minutes. That's an amazing response time. Unfortunately, the perpetrators got away because they had a spotter, but through the great diligence of our community police and the work that they did, we were able to get photos immediately sent out to other jurisdictions and agencies, and I believe it was even on the news that evening regarding what the perpetrators looked like. And so, I just want to tell you, as a community member, what an honor and privilege it is to have such a wonderful police force. And Chief Allen, if you would give my second significant thanks to your staff members that were so diligent in assisting me through that, and it was through, I believe, recommendations that they gave the last time I was robbed, about a year and a half ago, we implemented some of their security recommendations, and it did prevent the perpetrators from actually getting anything whatsoever. So, no narcotics are on the street as a result of that. When I was in Cambria, I was robbed three times. The response time was about 30 minutes, and through no fault of the county sheriffs, who are very, very busy, just note the difference in community policing and what an honor it is to have your group here in this community. So, thank you so much for that.
Right on. Thanks, John. Matt?
Sure. I don't have any necessary announcements or requests of harbor to explain anything. However, I do want to comment on consent agenda items A6 and A7. We have an employee of Morro Bay, Rick Sarawine, and I don't see him in the audience, but he will be retiring at the end of the month. And so, I would like to just kind of put it out there and then thank Rick for his service to the city and his work, and just say a nice thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
Thank you. Tonight, I want to recognize one of our super Morro Bay citizens, Bill LaFaye, for the many ways that he contributes to our community. Bill's a longtime member of the Harbor Advisory Board, and he has chaired the board, and he's also a founding member and treasurer of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance. Some time ago, he brought us a drive-in movie night at The Rock as a fundraiser for a new harbor office, and he's chairing a fundraising drive right now for that office. Very recently, he tried valiantly to bring fireworks to the city for our July 4 celebration. And whatever, you know, whether you like fireworks or you don't, Bill's motive was to help our business community, and I applaud him for that. So, I want to publicly thank Bill for what he does for our community. I also want to praise our staff for their support of our family fun day at Tydland's Park last week. Our recreation staff was magnificent, setting everything up, and we had police and fire presence there all day with equipment. The dunk tank was a big hit, but I have to question the wisdom of putting police officers in the dunk tank. I would think that if we put council members in the dunk tank and charged a dollar a throw, we could raise enough money to pave our streets. This coming Saturday, the Brian Waterberry Memorial Rock-to-Pier Run starts at 8:30 at The Rock. There are two events. There is a run from The Rock to the pier in Cayucus, and there is also a half marathon. Kitzman's Culligan Water is going to serve water along the route, and there'll be transportation from the pier back to The Rock after the event, and Shoreline Calvary Church is going to serve breakfast. So, you can still register for that by contacting the recreation services. I'm going to do office hours this coming Saturday, July 15, at Sun 'n Buns, from 9:00 until 10:00, and then I'll follow that up with a business walk. Last month, during office hours, I heard support for wayfinding signs and banners to help direct people to our downtown shopping area. On my business walk, I chatted with Chris Ferrante Pinero. I'm kind of guessing at the pronunciation. It's Chris. She just bought the landing upstream from Distazio's, and she has renovated it and turning it into a high-class lodging, similar to what she did in Santa Cruz. And I got to talk to Carrie Raya at Buttercup Bakery. This is a new business in town. It's on Morro Bay Boulevard, just down from the movie theater, next to the Aloha Shirt And Carrie just has one of these great Morro Bay stories. She came here, started a business, and she has several employees who are working for her, three blocks from where she lives. To me, this is the great Morro Bay story, and this is what makes us a great community. And she makes macaroons, and they are very good macaroons. So, that's it for me.
Great, Red, thanks. So, I just have a little service announcement. So, we have some literature in the back table. Hopefully, everybody's been to the back table. There's some literature back there on tonight's item that we'll be discussing for the water reclamation facility. There are speaker slips back there, and I've got some coming up, which is great. So, we'll, following the presentation, we'll get into public comment. We've got a business spot we'll introduce, and then the initial public comment will be items that aren't on the agenda. For those who may not be able to stay later on for an item on the agenda, if you just let us know, and we'll have you come up during the regular public comments section. But we do have a public comment for all items on the agenda. And with that, we'll move on to, the next item on the agenda is presentations, and I'll invite Chief Pond up for Friends of the Fire Department Scholarship Presentation for two of our local firefighters, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to be back. I'm Mike Pond, Vice President of the Friends of Morro Bay Fire Department and past Fire Chief of Morro Bay and resident of Los Osos. The Friends of the Morro Bay Fire Department have donated many thousands of dollars for equipment and training over the years, and have established an endowment to help fund paramedic and fire academy training for members of the Morro Bay Fire Department. I'd like to thank the community for their support over the years. They've helped us raise a lot of money, and it's a great way for us to give back to our community. A lot of the members of our board are here tonight. If they could just stand up for a minute, just wave their hand. These are our fundraisers. Thank you very much for what you do. Recently, we provided $1,500 to the department for the purchase of equipment for the Vial of Life program. The Vial of Life program is a way that your residents can keep their medical information, medications, any allergies, all marked down inside the vial of life, put it on their refrigerator. If the fire department or ambulance is called to their home, firefighters will go check that, make sure they have the information, if they're incapable of providing that information on their own. So, that was something we partnered with the Morro Bay Senior Center Incorporated, but it's a great program. If you need these, go by, see Chief Knuckles at the Fire Department. We also, in recent history, purchased $3,500 worth of equipment for the CERT trailer. And the CERT trailer, if you look up here, is housed out at Station 54 most of the time. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team, and that's where members of the community are trained in what to do during a disaster. Take care of themselves first, take care of their block, their neighbors, but this equipment is available to them to assist in a major disaster like an earthquake or some other thing that's affecting the entire community. Tonight, I am honored to provide funds to assist two of our local firefighters with funding for their education. Mike Kelly is attending the paramedic program, and Mickey Sessenbach is a recent graduate and the valedictorian of the Allen Hancock College Fire Academy. With the endowment that the Friends of the Morro Bay firefighters have established, we try and provide some relief when they go to these training programs, paramedic academy or the firefighter academy. So, tonight, if I could have both of them come up, have checks for $750 each for Mickey Again, I want to thank the community for their support. Without their support and funding, we wouldn't be able to do these types of things for the community. The other thing I'd like to do is just have everybody remember all the firefighters that are out fighting fires, thank them for what they do in these dangerous situations. Have a good night.
Thanks, Chief Pond, and thanks to Friends of the Fire Department Board and members and everything for what you do. Thanks. Any comments from council or anything, to the right, the left? All right. Thanks, you all. And with that, we'll move on to public comment. And opening up our public comment, we have our business spot, and we'll invite Anthony Barkett up from Harry's Upholstery, and longtime business owner in Morro Bay. Anthony, come on up and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your business. We don't have, you know, an hour to go through that because you've been here so long, but welcome.
No, three minutes is plenty. My name's Anthony Barkett. I'm the owner of Harry's Upholstery, located at 1312 Main Street in Morro Bay, and we've been there for some time. But I want to thank Jamie for inviting me up here to let you know a little bit about our history. And we are one of the oldest functioning businesses in Morro Bay. We were established in 1953 by Harry Oldfield, who owned it to 1975. And Harry was quite a character, and he was a bit of a partier, but he did excellent work. And he ended up retiring and selling Harry's to go back to work, back to the Pipe Fitters Union, so he could be employed by PG&E and help build Diablo Nuclear Power Plant. And so, when he sold it in '75, he sold it to Herman Gonzalez, and Herman owned it for about nine years. And I started working for Herman in 1976, when I was a junior in high school. And I happened to be dating his daughter at the time, and he had a couple of guys that didn't show up. And so, he called me up and said, hey, can you come down and just help me out? And I said, sure. And I went down there and started working, and I really liked it. And so, I applied for the Work Experience Program at the high school, Morro Bay High, which, where I graduated from, and we, I was able to be trained and work part-time until I graduated from high school, where I went to work full-time at Harry's. And we continued on for about seven, eight years, and then I bought the shop in 1975, or I'm sorry, 1985, and have owned it ever since. And we've always prided ourselves and are known for our quality workmanship and custom-built furniture. And one of our biggest, one of my biggest enjoyments out of being at the shop is we get to do a lot of work for people that are restoring their furniture from either their parents or their grandparents once they've passed. And that's a great honor to do, and we really take a lot of extra care when we do that or get those type of jobs. But I've had a great crew. I've had four guys that have been with me pretty much from the beginning, and one was my brother Joe, and Dave Orros, and a really good-
Take your time. You're good.
A really good friend of mine, Pablo Sanchez, who passed about three or four years ago. And I've been really fortunate to be able to grow up here and have a successful business, and a whole lot of support from the community through all different types of projects. And so, Jamie, thank you for inviting me up here.
Absolutely. Thanks for being here in Morro Bay and doing all you did. It's a great story. It's great to hear that.
Yeah, no, it's been, I've been lucky. I never had to move away, like a lot of my friends did, to find employment, and I'm right downtown. I meet a lot of great people. It's been, it's been a good ride, and I got a little bit more to go.
All right, Anthony, thanks. Thanks for kicking off our public comment with a great story. Okay, folks. All right, moving on to public comment. Got a number of speaker slips here. Carolyn Lewis is the first speaker slip, and then Richard Sadowski.
Good evening, Mayor Irons and Council. I'm a representative from Neighborhood Watch. I'm Secretary for Neighborhood Watch, and we have National Night Out coming up, August 1st, it's on a Tuesday, at Cloisters Park from 5:00 to 7:00 in the evening. It's in coordination with our gracious Morro Bay Police Department. There will be games, all kinds of stuff with kids, food, and a barbecue. Everybody brings potluck, and we share it, and there's a big barbecue. I would sincerely like to invite all of those in attendance here and all of you, please come and join us and meet more of our neighbors in Morro Bay. Learn about the different outfits that we have, CERTs, Fire Department, Harbor Patrol, all of those people that are here to help us and protect us against things that are going on, like what's going on around us right now. So, I sincerely would appreciate all of you in attendance. It would be great to have you there as representatives of our community.
Thank you, Carolyn. And I just ask that, folks, when you're coming up to public comment, if you make sure the mic is in a good spot, so the viewing audience and the people can hear, that'd be great. Welcome, Richard.
Richard Sadowski. I'm a member of the Water Reclamation Facility Citizen Advisory Committee, and have been on there for almost two years. And one of the unusual positions that I have on there is that, in the draft facility master plans that the consultants have been referencing, and some of the references of the studies that they use, I've addressed, and actually, and some of them actually had my data misrepresented. For those of you who don't know, Wallace Group, John Wallace is currently under investigation by the FBI and the district attorney with regards to some chicanery that was going on when he was in South County in Avala Beach. Well, back in 2003, 2004, Wallace Group was doing the flow study here in North Morro Bay while I was doing the flow study in Cayucus. And I was able to do the flow study because of my background in mechanical engineering and fluid dynamics, and I'm a Grade IV wastewater collection system operator as well. And one of the things that came out of my study that wasn't included in the study that's being referenced by the consultants is the, for those of you who don't know, Cayucus has a high percentage of vacation rentals, and how the vacation rentals and the flows from those affect the pockets of the communities and surcharge certain infrastructures. We have a similar situation going on in North Morro Bay along the 64, what's called the 60-40 line, the Main Street line. And that, that study, that my data was manipulated and not used properly in that study, and it's being referenced currently by the consultants. The other issue was a study by Cleethen Associates with regards to the nitrate spikes in a Morro Basin aquifer. My wife actually figured it out when she read the report with regards to the MTBE that we had back in 1999 on 1840 Main Street. It was a shell station that they found MTBE in the sewer lines. Well, a few of us, Linda Steggi, myself and my wife, we got together and we started studying this, and what we found is the nitrate spiked in 2002. And later on, it took us five years to try to get a test done, and we were right that the sewage was entering our Morro Basin drinking water aquifer. Now, the way it works, they had 68 monitoring wells, and what was occurring is the sewage is, from our dilapidated infrastructures, is leaching into our drinking water aquifer. And when the pumps are just turned on, it doesn't really show. It's after you start pumping a while, then the plume of sewage gets into the wells. So, that's what they found with MTBE. Given that information, and that information was passed on, given that information, what we have an opportunity here with the WRF is to restore a drinking water aquifer, and by doing so, we can get grant funding, Prop 1 funding, and get right to the top of the list.
I have to ask you to wrap it up.
Incorporate it into the WRF project. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Next is Rigmore. And then, Erin Elaine Lorie Putnam and Rednum Giva. There's three people on one speaker slip? If I'm misreading that, I'm not sure. Welcome, Rigmore.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Rigmore, resident of Morro Bay. First, I want to give thanks to the Coast Guard for the wonderful color-salute horn music they give us at 8:00 every morning. I think that is really special. It puts a happy note to the beginning of the day. Then, I understand you will discuss Messia D. later on. I will watch it on Channel 20 and have my two minutes now. I do not know exactly what Morro Bay voted for in 1981, but I understand the Messia was crafted by the fishermen to allow them to use of the area west of Embarcadero Road and between Beach Street and The Rock. Although I am more in love with the mammals in the bay than the fishermen, I do think that Messia D. helped to preserve that stretch of waterfront from being overbuilt. But I'm still extremely worried on how in the future they may have some ideas for that stretch from Mother's Beach to The Rock. I know they tried a few years ago to build a boat haul out at Mother's Beach. Luckily, that idea got squelched by upset residents. That area should be an open space area and be preserved and protected for everyone to appreciate, not given to a special group to swallow up. So, to take a real good look at Messia D. and its wording, I think is very important. Was it meant to protect the area so it would stay and continue for the fishermen the way it was in 1981? Well, I think everyone would like that. But evidently, there are some ambiguous words in that law, and that is scary. We have already discovered that when our written documents are open for interpretation, anger and irritation erupts. Let's not have that happen in the future. Handle it now. Please, please, protect the open space we have left, especially that space between the Mother's Beach and The Rock. Thank you.
Thanks, Rigmore. Lorie Putnam?
That was my name in 25 years old.
Okay, come on up.
I'm not sure exactly what name you would like to refer to me with.
Okay, this is public comment. You have three minutes.
My current name is Erin Elaine Redman.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, I'm wondering what the city is doing about restoring title to the property that I was supposed to inherit when my mother was either murdered or died. My mother being Ursula Andreas, that is, Brigitte Bardot, is either my aunt or my actual mother. Marilyn Monroe, matching my identity. I have the exact same birthmark here on my cheek. I know for a fact that I was kidnapped when I was a baby. I was there. This is a picture found in a life book of my entire family being pushed overboard. I remembered this incident before I found this photograph. The fact that many houses were built by my mother before she was actually dead, and you people are aware of many of the facts that I'm referring to, either generally, vaguely, or incidentally, okay, is so irritating, so upsetting, and so demoralizing, so inhumane, that you people have left me homeless, destitute, and heartbroken over decades, decades, five and a half, more than five and a half decades, since I was kidnapped. In 1960, all of the records were deleted here in this town, and it was incorporated around that time, and everything was hidden from me. Nobody ever told me. I had to keep my mouth shut lest I be murdered, and that is what the kidnappers told me. Whether they would have killed me or their friends would have killed me is questionable. After I remembered being kidnapped a few years ago, my fake father Floyd Redman- After I remembered being kidnapped a few years ago, my fake father Floyd Redman, Floyd Ray Redman, that is, pretty boy Floyd of the Chicago Mafia, tried to kill me by dumping four gallons of poison around the 474 Buena Street House where I had been residing and paying rent. Now, he evicted me when I remembered being kidnapped. I have been homeless for the past 10 months. I actually broke the drought, and people could argue and say that, you know, I'm wrong, and that the drought might have been broken naturally or by some other cause. But I put a silver sword on top of my head with a diamond attached to my hair, clipped in my hair, and it poured rain instantaneously inside that house. I tried that three times to make sure that I wasn't mistaken. And in the morning, the police came and arrested me and locked me up in Ventura at the mental hospital, said I would die. Now, a man who picked me up from there, from the San Luis Obispo County Health Department evidently intended to murder me on the way back. Again, this is my family being pushed overboard and my mother giving birth. When I was born underwater, my twin brother and I were, and my mother and maybe others in my family were either picked up by the assailants, that is, the pirates, or, and orcas and/or, you know, other sea creatures did tow us to safety. Now, that is what the arrows.
Erin, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm sorry for your story. Betty, Betty Winholz, followed by Nancy Castle.
Good evening. My name is Betty Winholz. I want to acknowledge two members of our community that have passed. One, I think, has already been announced here, and that's Barry, who owned the furniture store down on Quintana. His memorial will be this Sunday afternoon in this Barry Room, if those of you who knew him and want to come. The other person that passed over the weekend is Don Boatman. He was a member of Morro Bay for several decades. He actually ran for mayor back in the early part of the 2000s. He worked for PG&E for decades. His wife Glenda was a member and officer of the yacht club, so they were active members in our community. Don was a boater as well as electrician, and he could do anything. But we're very sad to lose him to our neighborhood, and I just wanted to acknowledge him.
Thanks for sharing, Betty.
Good evening, Council. I'm always thankful, but tonight I'm going to be serious. I want to talk about C1. I can't stay. There's, Morro Bay Wine Cellar is doing a tribute to Rodney Crowell. It's calling me. I need to go down there. And if you haven't been to the Morro Bay Wine Cellar, they're doing marvelous music many nights. So, but, C1. I, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of money as anybody else does, but I live next to Morro Creek. I live on the other side of Morro Creek, and in 1995, we flooded in that area. And it was flooded from the underpass to Taco Bell. Now, what's been floating around on Facebook is that the sewer treatment plant wasn't impacted by the last flood, and that may or may not be true entirely, but let's not be short-sighted as we make these considerations for major infrastructure. The world is full of things that were done short-sighted, that, oh, let's save money now and build a flawed dam. Do we want to talk about Orville? So think very carefully about what you're doing. Think about your own homes. Think about your bookcases. The water came through my house. No, I was not prepared. It kissed the bottom, it wiped out the bottom shelf, and it kissed the bottom of the next shelf up. If you put fill to build a major infrastructure, and I love this, significantly less fill is said here, on one side of the creek and build that side up, water's rushing down to reach the ocean, that's also called a dam. And it's going to raise the level of water all over that area, and maybe instead of just one shelf of stuff shot, I'll have two shelves of stuff gone. And there's reference to 100-year sea level rise projections, reference to FEMA maps. I don't know how old the FEMA map is. Any map that's made of a creek bed is already wrong by the time it's published. I love my neighbors up the bed, up the stream, who grow food, but I know over the years, manipulations have been done on that creek bank. The creek is very, very degraded as a quality flow, water flow channel. All of those have implications, so these projections are so flawed even before we get started. And in 95, while I have a couple of moments left, I know that at that time, Sycamore Springs down by Avila had permits to build a whole new complex that would have extended across the creek. If that had actually been built, it would have been six feet underwater in 1995. So I am very willing, as a Morro Bay native, to pay what it costs to move this plant out of a flood zone. Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Nancy.
My name is Bob Keller, resident of Morro Bay. I'm here to thank everybody, all the Morro Bay citizens, the business people, volunteers, helpers, sports therapy, Cross Mill Library. We had a great kickoff of barbecue all day long with great weather. The food was free, the entertainment was free, you could donate blood free. But anyway, we had, we had record crowds, and we raised record donations from the people who donated and from the raffle tickets. We, every year, we make more to support our program, which is mostly volunteers. Anyway, just want to say that next year, I think we'll have a bigger one, if we can just let everybody know how good we are. And also, Serv Camp has started, and started this last weekend, and it will go to August the 5th. And the only days off that the volunteers and help or whoever works on it get off is Sunday and Monday. Otherwise, we'll be having Serv Camp five days a week. And I can't think of anything else. I still have a little time. If you have any questions, you can look on Facebook. We are Project Serv Camp Morro Bay on, not Facebook, but the internet. And you can get all the links, and you'll be surprised to see all your local people on there, even the Fire Department, Police Department, and et cetera. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bob. Adam Pinterest, followed by Barbara Dorr.
Good evening, City Council, city staff, and residents of Morro Bay. My name is Adam Pinterest. I live in Monterey, and I'm the Director of Government and Community Relations for Ethno-Botanica, the oldest and longest-serving medical cannabis delivery service on the central coast. In respect of the fact that you have a very robust agenda tonight, I'm going to keep my comments as brief as possible. The majority of our patients are 65 or older. Many of them are on fixed or limited income. The unfortunate reality is that insurance does not cover the annual doctor's consultations for medical cannabis, nor does it cover the medication delivered at unavoidable added cost. Many of our patients are expressing that they need the cost savings that could be afforded to them with a local dispensary, and this council did vote unanimously to craft an ordinance by August 30th. So on behalf of the patients who need access to affordable medicine, I urge you to please stick with that timeline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Barbara Dorr, welcome. Those are all the speaker slips I have for public comment.
Good evening. Barbara Dorr, Morro Bay. Just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and this is sort of related to Measure D, but basically, it's the Brown Act. In your staff report, the attempt and the recommendation to totally bypass the Brown Act for your advisory committee on Measure D changes and to eliminate general public involvement and notice of meetings, your staff report states pursuant to the Brown Act, the new body made up of two P. Planning Commission members and two Harbor Advisory Board ad hoc committee members would be a legislative body and only able to meet at duly noticed public meetings. But then, it goes on to give this devious way to avoid having to follow the Brown Act. And I guess, I'm just appealing to you as our elected officials, don't let this happen in Morro Bay. Whatever the issue is, Measure D was voted on, as I understand it, by the people of Morro Bay, and it protects an area for commercial fishermen. And to allow behind-the-scenes two groups to get together without really being, you know, deliberative in what they're doing, and then come back with a recommendation that none of the public have been able to participate in and comment on, I think it's criminal. And I hope you don't allow it. I hope you say, "Staff, we want this unchon on everything we do in Morro Bay." I mean, I think the Brown Act is one of the most important laws that we follow in city government. And anyways, that's, that's basically what I wanted to say. So I hope you don't choose the devious way. Oh, the second one is this is summertime. You're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars tonight, if possibly not billions. The Trident Project, the very first commercial. I don't think there's another commercial project nearing that size in the whole United States of America, and I'm not sure where in the rest of the world. And you're doing it in the middle of the summer. I got back from vacation just recently. I still haven't unpacked, and that's a big, big deal. You're signing away everything in that agreement. Very disappointing. Have a public meeting, duly noticed, well noticed, a robust, which I hate that word, but robust, robust meeting. Make sure there's a lot of people at that meeting, though. And the other one, okay, Trident, Measure D, and the wastewater treatment plant. And wonderful peer group review, absolutely wonderful, but here you are in the middle of the summer. People aren't thinking about sewers and wind energy and Brown Act violations. They're not a violation, I know. Found a devious way to make it legal, but it's not fair to the community. Excuse me very much. Appreciate everything every one of you do. Sometimes I get excited about the Brown Act, so I apologize because I really think that's a critical law that we must follow carefully.
Thanks, Barbara. Do you have any public comment slips for general public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And the Brown Act, I just want to, that is an item that's later on in the agenda. So, and there's a lot more information that was just disclosed as far as the public comment goes, but maybe Eric and Joe, maybe you can just maybe clarify some of the conversations about the Brown Act and the recommendation. We haven't even discussed what we're going to be doing with that in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor. The paragraph that was read was a paragraph that I wrote, because when I read the staff report, it was unclear to me whether everyone understood that if two separate ad hoc committees get together, that creates a legislative body that has to follow the Brown Act. So all I was doing was making sure that the report was clear and that everyone knew, but because my job is also to be complete in my explanation and my advice, I wanted to advise by writing the staff report that if the staff, if the ad hoc committee was set up differently, it wouldn't be a legislative body, and therefore, it wouldn't need to have duly noticed agendas. I wasn't recommending which way to go. I was merely stating the fact, so I feel like the messenger just got killed.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I did feel as though the comment did warrant some response, at least at this point, because it's going to be an item that we'll discuss in full later on in the evening, so hopefully that helps at that point. So with that, any other comments from council members?
Just might address, I believe, Mr. Pinterest.
Pardon me?
In his comment, talked about an ordinance that we agreed would be completed by August, and I'm thinking that, as if that's what you said, indeed, that's not the current timeline, and maybe we can have an update per our last discussion on what the process will be for developing that ordinance.
The subcommittee has met with staff, and we're preparing to report that we presented at your next council meeting in August, and then from there, we'll get direction from the council, but the goal is to have something in place by the end of the calendar year per state law.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. With that, that'll conclude public comment, and we'll move on to consent. I don't have any speaker slips for consent. I'm looking towards Dana. No, no public comment. Any public comment for consent? Seeing none, I'll open up for consent to council. Any items to poll on consent from council?
I'd like to poll A7.
Item A7. Anything else?
I'd like to poll 85, please.
85? So we have 85 and 87. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve all items on consent with the exception of items 85 and 87.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hennings, second by Ms. McPherson. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Item 85, Matt?
Oh, yes. This item is, I'd like to, I wanted to ask Mr. Livik if he could explain this item. Later on in the agenda, there is an item when we talk, and well, we're going to be talking perhaps about Trident Wind. This item, in terms of renewable energy, it's important for people in Morro Bay to know about this item. So, Mr. Livik, if you could explain a little bit about it?
So this is, this item is authorizing a PACE program. So it's a program that allows homeowners to make energy and water-efficient improvements to their home and avail themselves of some financing mechanisms that can be then collected through their property tax bill. We have other providers of this. This is the fourth one that will make themselves available in Morro Bay. Typically, they are advertised through the contracting community, and that's how folks find out about it. So we have Y-Green Energy, America First, and the HERO program are other alternatives for this program. But it's basically for homeowners and some businesses to avail themselves of funds to make energy-efficient improvements, solar projects such to their businesses and homes. Thank you.
Any other questions? You want to just do a motion for all of them at the end?
Okay.
Okay. Item A7?
Yeah, I actually just pulled, this is the pavement preservation project update, and in reading the staff report, I just wanted to clarify more for the public that you, in fact, are planning on doing more paving this year, and I know that in the past, we had every other year paving projects. So could you explain why we're able to do it every year now?
So when we issued this contract last year, we issued it as an IDIQ contract, which is indefinite quantity, indefinite delivery. So it allows us to secure bid prices for a longer period of time and save the costs of going out to bid multiple times. So we're working with that contractor, pavement coatings, to determine pavement techniques and pavement preservation techniques and the streets that are suitable. We'll have that list going to PWA very soon, and this year, we're going to beat the weather and get it done before the rains onset.
And this is using money that's been appropriated in this coming year's budget?
Already appropriated in the budget as a capital project. We have our Measure Q funds. We have a small grant from the CalRecycle for use of tire rubber in the coating mix and cobbling together a few other sources of funds to make up our paving project this year.
Great. That's good news for our citizens. Thank you.
Thanks. If there are no other comments by council, I'll take a motion to approve item 85 and 87.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hennings, second by Ms. McPherson. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Great. And that concludes consent. Moving on to our first business item of tonight.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to announce about C3?
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, would you make that announcement for us? I think you can probably explain that a little bit better. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Item C3 was mentioned by someone that's dealing with Item C-3 was mentioned by someone that's dealing with potential agreement between the city and Trident Winds, who are anticipating and hoping that they'll be able to come through with a project for a wind farm in the ocean. The item that's on the agenda, there was a lot of discussion with staff after the item had been presented and after the developer or Trident representative signed the agreement. They had a couple of comments they wanted to make on the agreement. And based on the discussion that we had, we think there's another, we want to come back to you with a different agreement, similar but different, that actually is, we think, more beneficial to the city. And so we didn't want to have that discussion and have you have to make that decision tonight. We're going to bring it back to you at the first meeting in August.
So do we need a motion to continue this item?
No, you do not.
We're just, and so for the sake, this is being pulled off the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification. That takes us down to two items on business, items C-1 and C-2. Our first item of business would be review of this report of the Public Works Cost Review Workshop for the Water Reclamation Facility project and provide comments and direction as deemed appropriate. And the staff report is start off by Mr. Livik, and we'll get started with that. And we've got speaker slips that are coming up, and just want to make sure that there are any more speaker slips for this item. We just welcome those.
And we're going to shuffle folks around a little bit here.
So we'll take a little shuffle, a minute here.
If I could take a moment while we're shuffling. Mr. Hennings earlier announced that Rick Sauerwein is retiring at the end of this month, and Rick's joined us now. Rick, could you stand up, please?
Where's Rick?
Oh, Rick.
Thank you for your service, Rick.
Yeah, thank you.
Looking to you, Rob, whenever you, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We are here to present the findings from our peer review panel. The peer review panel met on June 7. We then brought this item for recommend, for discussion and recommendations to our Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee. And now on to City Council. Also want to point out that we have a couple of members from our Regional Water Quality Control Board in the audience to make comments. John Pierre Wolf, the Chair of the Regional Board, and Harvey Packard, a staff member from the Board, are also here in the audience. Also want to point out, we received late in the day, which is on the, copies are on the back counter, there may be 50 or so copies back there, a correspondence from the California Coastal Commission regarding some of the findings in the staff report. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rickenbach here to make the presentation. And following the presentation, we'll have questions from council, public comment, and direction from council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, what we'd like to do, let's make sure that we have this working here. Tonight, what we'd like to do is present the findings of direction you provided to us in April, which was to go engage a peer panel of public works officials from different agencies around the county to get their assessment of cost opinions that have been developed for the WRF project, the methodologies, the assumptions and such. We also want to present as part of this report, information that you asked for to provide cost opinions based on some of those recommendations of reduced versions of the project at the South Bay Boulevard site. And we'll get into that as well. This is for the benefit of the public, going to be a presentation very similar to what we presented at the WRF CAC last week, but it also has the benefit of their recommendation as well, and we'll get into that briefly here. So tonight, we're going to go through all these, and at the end, we'll get to the Q and A. A little background is in order here, first of all. Let's see, here we go. I think all of our presentations tend to start with the goals, where we started as a community, and the goal setting back in 2014 and such. And at that time, there were, there was public workshops that led to the development of community goals that related to how the project would be designed, the performance standards, the criteria, tertiary treated water, removing contaminants of emerging concern, composting was one of the things talked about and so forth. But reclamation, water reclamation was at the heart of that. And at that time, the direction was go figure out how to design and ultimately develop and build that project. Over the next couple of years, as all of us in this room are aware, there was a lot of effort to try to find a suitable site, which led at first from an analysis of 17 sites and narrowing and so forth, to try to find one that would meet those goals, including being compatible with neighboring land uses to develop tertiary treated reclaimed water in a cost-effective manner and so forth. And where that ultimately led was to where we are now. In June 2016, the council selected the South Bay Boulevard site to do further investigation and more specifically to do a facility master plan, essentially the cookbook for what a water reclamation facility would do or how it would need to be built there, and then the cost involved with that. And then also a master water reclamation plan, what do you do with the water as a result, and the costs involved with that. In November of last year, that draft facility master plan was presented for that site. And in March of this year, the draft master water reclamation plan was presented. And the net result of all that was to, was to, really from your perspective, have a better understanding of what would be involved, not just facility-wise, but also cost-wise. As a result of that, I think there was general concern at the council level, but also in the community about the costs and the opinions and the assumptions about those costs. And what I think the overall message to the community and to staff on April 25 was find ways to potentially reduce those costs. And also, just as importantly, look to convene an outside group to review those costs and those assumptions, to see how valid those methodologies were, and to present an unbiased outside, no dog in the hunt opinion about that. And also whatever other observations that that group might have to help reduce costs. So there was that. And then, let's see if we can, so what we did at the staff level, led by Rob, we were able to convene a group of highly qualified folks from around the county. Matt Thompson from the City of Paso Robles, John Waddell from the county, and also the project manager for the Los Osos project, Russ Fleming, utilities manager from the City of Pismo Beach, and Dave Hicks at the City of San Luis Obispo, also in charge of their water reclamation facility project there. So these were highly qualified officials who've been down this road on direct experience on costing and developing projects of a similar nature. On June 7, we brought them into the city, and they volunteered their time and worked with staff on this. And what we did, we presented, and they had in advance the documents that the city had produced, the facility master plan, the water reclamation plan, the costing that went with that, and so forth. And we left it open to them. It was a no-holds-barred discussion. We were not going to try to influence or direct them in any way, except for to answer their questions, technical questions, where they may not have been that familiar with some of the issues. We also didn't present to them any regulatory constraints as to what they should look at. In other words, they weren't looking at the city's adopted local coastal plan, or the Coastal Act, or any such information in giving us opinions about cost. So we really wanted an unvarnished set of opinions about this. And from that, a series of recommendations came from the discussion. Now, keep in mind, the way the discussion went was really, we'd present some information, they'd ask a lot of questions. At the staff level, we'd write a lot of notes and observations. And you see in your staff report, we thought it was important to include a lot of those observations in there, which may not have risen to the level of recommendation, but provided some flavor as to how the recommendations were developed. We also, after the fact, provided them our notes and our information and what we considered to be the recommendations they provided, to make sure they agreed or didn't agree with the way we characterized what they provided to us. We got concurrence from them that it was a fair characterization of the meeting. And so there were issues, some themes, and I'll go through them because I think it's worth noting for the public, and it may be a little difficult to read these on the screen. But among the recommendations, the biggest contributor to cost at the South Bay Boulevard site is the site itself. And the reason for that, pipeline and earthwork costs there are high, there's other reasons, but those are primary reasons. And in their view, looking at it from an outside perspective, the most effective way to reduce those costs is somehow reduce pipeline and earthwork costs, which to them meant, is there a way to get back to closer to the existing wastewater treatment plant, somewhere in that vicinity, to avoid lift station needs and extensive pipeline networks? They also recognized that reliance on state water is a paramount problem facing the city. Again, their thought was if it, if cost is an issue, to achieve that water independence cost-effectively and in a timely manner, it might make more sense to move the focus of the project closer to the existing wastewater site. Now, as we're discussing this with them, we're also talking about the Coastal Act and Coastal Commission input in 2013 that directed this away and how the project moved away. They understood that, but again, they also said if we had, if we had a way of not having to address those issues, this would make sense from our perspective. They also presented the idea that due to the state's fiduciary responsibility, the high cost and rate and resultant controversy could impact the ability to receive low interest state revolving fund financing. That is to say, if we were at a site where there was significant lack of consensus about that site at the public level and opposition, and the state revolving fund folks looked at that and didn't perceive that as a stable project on which to loan money because they wouldn't know if that project would get built, that that might be an issue as you put in the application for state revolving fund financing. So that was one thing they wanted us to be mindful of. This item four, which looks like three, the second number three, is that the cost estimates, and this is an important thing, cost estimates developed for the South Bay Boulevard site, they thought were reasonable as presented. They thought that the underlying assumptions were appropriate. That includes soft costs and contingency assumptions. And we've heard a lot of input from the public that really doesn't agree with that from certain points of view in the public. So we really wanted to ask them, what do you think? Tell us where we're wrong. They suggested there were places that the assumptions might be tweaked a percent or two here on certain assumptions. But for example, on contingency, where we are in the project right now, there wasn't complete agreement about that. There were those who thought the 25% contingency was right. There were those who thought it was too low. So that was, that was an interesting observation for where we are in this project. But generally, they thought that was about right. They also suggested several ways to potentially cut costs at the South Bay Boulevard site in the design. First would be depending on the secondary treatment process, that the proposed equalization basin could be reduced, and an OX ditch, for example, wouldn't require as much equalization as an MBR, SPR option. So they're, they're talking about designs to reduce costs. They also talked about since that site is fairly isolated relative to neighbors, you could potentially minimize odor control to some extent, focusing on the headworks. They also noted that if you don't do the corpyard, and if you don't do the corpyard, you could move the site down into the area that requires less earthwork, and that could cut some costs as well. They thought that removing the septic receiving station and reducing the size of the fire pump facility would work fine. In this case, that could cut some costs. They also noted that if the city doesn't intend to go to full tertiary treatment, and remember, we left open that question for them, to consider going to an OX ditch with secondary clarifier, that would be a design that would be somewhat less costly. And then finally, because again, we're not right up against neighbors and the highway to reduce some of the architectural details, but it would still need to be made of low maintenance materials, which are robust in their own right. So those were some things that we took into consideration here. They also said if the city is eventually going to be going to full reclamation, they thought it made sense to not defer the development of onsite buildings and infrastructure related to recycled water, that it would be more expensive later on. I know that there's, there's a school of thought that would say, but technologies change and get refined and may become cheaper in the future. But I think in talking to those engineers and Rob, the idea that things will become cheaper over time, they just didn't see that was a likely outcome, even if technologies change. So their thought was to do as much as possible early on, at the same time recognizing there's a cost to that. But that was their thought in the long haul, that would be a cheaper way to go. They also recognize, and this last one is important, that the proposed sewer and water rate, as presented previously, of about $250 a month seemed untenable in the context of the existing citywide household income, which is about $50,000. And it's really not exactly that. There are those that are higher income than that, those that are way lower, there's not a whole lot in that central range, there's retirees, and there's, there's people on fixed incomes, that's recognized. But that wasn't their job to figure out how to deal with that. They just know that is an issue. There's clearly an issue here to have to address. And so that was the flavor of their recommendations. So what we did was take their recommendations, especially on how to potentially reduce costs and some of the percentage costs to apply those. And we applied those to do two different alternatives that you asked to have us look at. We called them alternative one and two. One was to the sort of the minimum version, a full secondary treatment project, and then deferring tertiary treatment and the recycled water components. In other words, build a project out there that gets you to wastewater, but you're still discharging the water out to the ocean, the treated water, and you're not getting to the recycle, though it could be, it could be upgraded to get to that point at some point. And the second was similar to that, is to go to tertiary disinfection and deferring the recycled water component, in effect, the phase one part of the whole project. So we looked at that in some detail. To start with, though, what, what we want to do is remind everybody and you what, how the costs were developed for the entire project. The number that's been talked about, that $167 million, what went into that? What does that mean? And here, we're going to break it out for you. It started out with the construction of the water reclamation facility, lift station, pipelines, all the major hardware, being about $87 million. And this is all going to be reported in $2017. So over time, these numbers might go up a little bit because of inflation. But that would be for that part. And then the engineering, procurement, admin, permitting, and so forth, land acquisition, escalation, about $29 million. And this number here is based on the assumptions we had talked about before, not refined yet with the, with the expert panel's input. So capital cost being about $117 million. And that's for phase one. Now we're talking about the recycled water part of the project, the capital cost for that, about $18 million. And then the admin, engineering, and so forth, construction management, another $5 million for about $23 million on top of that. When you add those two up, you get about $140 million. And then you add the contingency, the construction contingency of 25%, which again, the group looked at that and thought that was reasonable to apply right now for the purposes of where we are in the design. And that's how you come up to the $167 million number for the entire project. So now let's look at what they, what we did to apply the factors that the peer review group told us to do and apply it to these two reduced projects that you had asked us to look at. And this is alternative one, the secondary treatment project with no recycled water, where the construction of the WRF itself, that is to say, a wastewater treatment facility that could become a WRF, about $63 million, add the contingency to that, and the procurement, engineering, and so forth, and you're up, it's about a $98 million project to do that. Alternative two, tertiary treatment, same thing, it's a little more spendy to build that, about $74 million, and then you add contingency and all the soft costs, and you have about $115 million for that project. And that's essentially the phase one project as compared to, in combination or as part of the entirety that you've looked at before. So this So this is here to compare those two, alternative one and two. And just so it's clear what we're looking at here, the first three lines are the cost savings, capital cost savings, relative to, let's call it, the, the phase one part of the project. And that is to say, construction cost savings of alternative one compared to the, what would be built in its entirety in that phase one, which remember, in the entirety of the project, a lot of the recycled water components are built in phase one. You save about $27 million by implementing alternative one. You save about $9 million comparatively when you implement alternative two. What the deferred costs at the bottom are, because alternative one and two don't go to full recycle, these are costs for the future that would have to be born if you want to get to recycled water, and it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 40-plus million more dollars to do that, depending on the alternative. So that, and again, that also doesn't account for the fact that in the future, money will probably cost more. So this is really all in $2017 for a way to compare order of magnitude. One other thing that came out of this, when, when the peer review panel said, you know, it makes a lot of sense to at least consider the idea of going back to the, near the existing site, knowing that the Coastal Commission hadn't weighed in on that at all, and, and we hadn't been asked to weigh in on it, it was a new idea from them, it did make some sense to at least, because the question would come up, what is the rough cost? What would it really entail? And so what we did, we worked with Black &amp; Veatch and to apply the factors as suggested by the peer review panel in a very rough way of a project similar to the whole project that we have put out for South Bay Boulevard. What would that do relatively speaking for cost savings? And I really want to point out, this is very rough. We'd have to refine this if this is a direction you'd want to go. But where it shows, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about $40 million less money in the long haul for the whole project at that location, somewhere near the existing site. So in other words, a project all in with full recycling, with contingency, somewhere in the neighborhood of $125 to $130, $124 to $129 million, and it could be more and it could be less, it's very rough. But that compares to the 167. So you get a feeling of what that percentage difference is, more or less. And what is that, why would it be so much less? Well, there's reduced site work, reduced yard piping on a smaller scale, reduced wall thicknesses because the site's more level, less road needed, reduced offsite pipeline lengths, no septic receiving station, remove fire protection facility, and remove the remote operations facility. So all those factored into those rough costs. So here, what we want to do is sort of do some numbers comparisons, because you may want to go back to these when you have questions, but these are the alternatives we looked at. The first column is the project you've seen before at $167 million for the full project in. Second one, alternative one, you asked for phase one, phase one there is $98 million. Alternative two, tertiary, $115 million. And in both cases, deferring the recycle, which adds about another 40 million to each, bringing you up for the full project somewhere between $140 and $150 million, $155 million, compared to a full IPR indirect potable reuse project similar to the South Bay full project near the existing site of about $24 to $29 million. So this gives you orders of magnitude relatively speaking among the options. None cheap, there's none cheap. And the assumptions we made again were vetted by the peer review panel. What does this do to rates? Again, these are very, very rough orders of magnitude conceptually. That first column talks about the rates relative to what had been reported before, a total of $241 roughly with the water and sewer combined, the bills there. Alternative one, being secondary only, in phase one, would add about $35 to $40 a month from the existing approved rate increase of 150, bringing you to about 185 or 190. Alternative two, tertiary treatment, getting ready for recycle, the increase is somewhere around $50 a month, bringing you somewhere in the neighborhood of $200 a month total. And the full project somewhere near the existing wastewater site, again, this is all recycling, brings you up about $50 a month, again, in the $200 a month range. This is all just rough comparisons, and these numbers would have to really be worked out through revisions to the city's draft financial and rate analysis, and that would really need to happen. But at least you get a feel for it right here. So we took all this information to the citizen advisory committee folks, and there was a lot of input there, it was well attended, and the, and the group had a lot to say about this, too. And these are some of the key issues that were brought up in that discussion. One, the peer review panel scope was limited to reviewing the cost estimating methodologies and assumptions, and everyone wanted to be clear about that, that that's what they're asked to do. And so any cost opinions they made really didn't account for, here's the second bullet, any of the limitations put forward by the city's LCP or Coastal Act or their recommendations from 2013, for example, to move away from the site and the direction we've had. And we've gotten a letter from Coastal that builds on this point, that just came in today. But they did acknowledge that those regulatory constraints exist. In the discussion also, staff clarified what is meant, what was meant by the peer review panel about at or near the existing wastewater site. It didn't mean, for example, the Rigetti site, or the Rancho Colina site, or farther up Highway 41. It meant something that really reduced costs near the site, reduced pipeline work and so forth. And then the WRF CAC asked for clarification on costs at other local wastewater treatment plant projects or WRF projects to provide an apples-to-apples comparison. In other words, there was a lot of discussion, I think, in your staff report about the Los Osos project costs, about San Luis's similar project costs, and we wanted to make sure that we could present those in a, in a more apples-to-apples way. And we can discuss that as you have questions about that. But their overall recommendation, based on all that, and they had different choices, as you do, one could have been to, to say, let's just go forward at the current site as it is and so forth. But knowing the costs, what they recommended you look at was to direct staff to take up to two months to talk with the California Coastal Commission and the Regional Board about the feasibility of a project at or near the existing wastewater treatment plant site. We've heard today from the Coastal Commission an early take on that, which, which you might have questions about. Now, if it would appear to be feasible at or near that location, then, once we would find that out, if they thought, okay, maybe it's something to consider, then report back to the WRF CAC and to the council, and then go from there, which would require some work at that point. If it was a nonstarter, then they recommended, the WRF CAC recommended moving forward with a project at the South Bay Boulevard site based on alternative two, that's the tertiary project, the phase one, to get it reclamation ready at that point, deferring the recycled water to that point. And so where do we go from here? If you were to follow their recommendations, then here are the things that would have to happen next. Staff would have to identify and investigate potentially suitable locations at or near the site, the existing wastewater site. Staff would have to prepare some sort of project concept that's for that location based on the information that's already been developed in the facility master plan and master water reclamation plan. And the reason for that is in engaging Coastal Commission or the Water Board, it would be helpful to their staff to understand what it is they're being asked to consider to go back, if it were to go back to here. But at that point, to actively engage both agencies to assess the likelihood of, if see if even possible, to support such a project. And then during this time, to conduct outreach, public outreach here in the community with the goal primarily to make sure that accurate information is out there. Tonight is one of those opportunities, we're trying to make sure that accurate information is out there. And also to, 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 to report on the progress relative to investigating whatever direction we need to go. And then ultimately, the council, you'll need to provide direction depending on the outcome of all that. So that, that's where we're at right now. And at this point, that concludes our presentation. We're here, Mike Nunley and Eileen Shields from MKN are here to answer any of your questions on a technical side, but I hand it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks for the presentation. So as far as any of the other information that's come in, where do you want to, when do you want to kind of present that?
So the, we've received a letter from the Coastal Commission a little after four this afternoon, really haven't had any time to discuss that with them. Just wanted to get that information out there. And then staff and the Chair of the Water Board are here to answer any questions on their letter that they provided regarding working with the city on pursuing a replacement for their aging wastewater infrastructure as quickly as possible.
All right, great. So we'll have, open up with questions from council? Following that, I'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back for discussion. And I'm expecting quite a bit of discussion, so I would ask for council, as we go through this discussion, I'm going to be crafting notes, I already talked with Dana about this, so as we go through motions, I would ask that council be patient as we read those motions, and then it'll allow time for Dana, our city clerk, to record that, and then we can read those, that motion back, and then we can be clear that whatever the motion is, and there could be multiple motions. I think there, we need to be, be aware that, hey, it doesn't have to be all in one motion. So I just want to lay some, some groundwork for everybody as far as the discussion, the discussion goes. And with that, if there's not any other questions about that, then I would just open it up for questions, and I would start off with Ms. McPherson on the end. Are there any questions on kind of the process that amongst council?
I think the only question I have is, is if the Regional Water Quality Control Board is here, would, when would you like them to speak to us?
I do have speaker slips. If they would like to come up and speak first, they might be able to give us some comments on perspective from the Regional Water Control Board. Thanks for, thanks for taking the time and coming out, Harvey.
It's our pleasure. Good afternoon, evening, Mayor Irons and members of the council. My name is Harvey Packard. I am a supervising engineer at the Water Quality Control Board. I'm here with the board chair, Dr. Jean-Pierre Wolf. And I'm happy to answer questions. I could make a few comments to begin with if you'd like. I just want to convey what I understand to be the Water Board's position on the, on staff's recommendation that we have in front of you today. The Water Board really has a couple of roles here that we've talked about. One is to facilitate the process, and the other is to regulate the city and its waste discharges. And by facilitate, I think what I'm talking about is helping with the permitting agencies such as the Coastal Commission, and assisting in, in what we can there. Their first reaction is not unexpected, to me anyway, but maybe there's some, some progress that we can make with them. We are also a partner in acquiring funding, and we can work with the city on the state revolving fund loans and grants. So we're here to offer that kind of assistance and help and any other, any, any other help that is within our capability. Our main role is to regulate the city's waste discharges. And in that role, we have concerns with, with the process and, and how it has come out over the years. We have concerns with the timing. This process is taking a long time. In the letter that the board issued today, it referenced a settlement agreement the city and the Water Board entered into 2009, 2008, so it's been nine years. We expected to have a facility up and running by 2014 in that agreement. Obviously, we're not anywhere close to having that. Those timing issues translate into water quality issues for us. This plant is old, it's decrepit, it's, it has potential for causing water quality problems with spills on parts of, on busy days, it actually doesn't fully treat wastewater to standards. Reclamation is, is the future in the wastewater industry. We urge the city to commit to doing that now. It's going to be required in the future, is our expectation, and you'll save money and time by doing it now. We reluctantly concur with your staff's recommendation to hold back for a couple months and explore the coastal, explore the, the old existing site. I say reluctantly because it, time is money, and time is water quality, as I've explained. But we do appreciate the fact that this is an expensive project, and we want the city to be able to explore the option of reducing costs and still coming up with a good project and having public support it. So having said that, Dr. Wolf is available for comments, and we're available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Packard. I didn't know if Dr. Wolf wanted to speak at all, or, sure, thank you. Welcome.
Good, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jean-Pierre Wolf, Chair of the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, and our region basically goes north from the San Mateo area to the county line of Ventura. So we do regulate many, many water treatment plants. And, you know, the situation that you have, as our staff pointed out, you have a very old plant, which is way beyond its reliable level, and the water quality currently discharged in many instances does not meet standards. So we certainly appreciate and understood the need for you to have a certain amount of time to plan a, a new, a new facility, and hence why we have been willing to be patient and, and then basically work with you. But we're getting to a point where unfortunately, we will not have a lot of options. The reason I described to you the geographic coverage that we have is that it is presidential also if we do allow a particular plant to have a significant extension of its permit, although it does not, that facility does not meet water quality, because we do have other permittees who then would say rightfully so, why did you allow this with Morro Bay and you're not allowing this with us? So our hands are tied. And I'm speaking as, as a board member, where we are confronted quite often with comparison and contrasting, and why did you approve this facility but not ours? So we, we do not have a lot of leeway. Additionally, to the point of recycled water, is that we have recently experienced a five-year historical drought. And yes, last year, we certainly enjoyed abundant rain, but this drives the point of water safety. And I do believe that for the city of Morro Bay, you know, it is your duty to consider the water safety aspect in your portfolio, because droughts are inevitable and will recur again. So aside of the point made earlier that the, the cost will keep on increasing, I think there is that important aspects of, of the water security as part of your portfolio. Lastly, you know, considering just going along with your existing facility and thinking, well, you know, we, we'll just pay the fine as they go along because that's the cost of doing business. It is not, because there is a point where as a regional board, for us to meet the Port of Cologne Act, not only we would have to levy fines, but also we would have to point out to the financial benefit of avoiding the construction cost of an upgraded plant. And these fines would be very significant and would not make any sense in terms of, you know, prudent, long-term financial stability for, for the city. And we are here to help. Yes, we are regulators, but we're also facilitators. So we want to work with you. You have our commitment to help you find a good solution. You have our commitment to help you find a good solution that will both meet environmental requirements, but also a project that is financially sustainable. Unfortunately, the cost of these types of infrastructures is very significant. You know, that cannot be changed, but in terms of locations, we have an open mind, you know, to work with you. We certainly will gladly assist in the conversation with the Coastal Commission, but do keep in mind that the Regional Water Quality Control Board is part of a state water board, CALIPA, and we are two separate agencies. So, you know, we can help, but only up to, to a certain point. So I certainly also want to acknowledge the efforts that your staff has made in really trying to look at every nooks and crannies to find a good option. And I think that's very positive. And I think your peer review that you had has done a very good job. So thank you, and again, we're here willing and able to help you.
Thank you, Dr. Wolf. I think Councilmember McPherson might have a question or two. Councilmember Marlese, if you wouldn't mind, I think just from informational standpoint, I just want to thank our staff and Dr. Wolf and Mr. Packard. Our staff arranged a meeting with the Water Board, Mr. Packard and Mr. Pierre Wolf as a subcommittee. We were able to do a pre-meeting yesterday, and so that was enlightening to gain the information that was just shared with us. So I appreciate the time to do that and coordinating that amongst staff. So, Marlese, I think you've got some questions.
I just wanted to also thank you so much, both of you, for coming here tonight, because I think it's really important for our citizens to understand the current situation. And so if you wouldn't mind just answering a couple of questions. First of all, can you tell us what the 301H waiver is, and this is for the sake of the folks in the community, and how we have gotten that from the Regional Quality Board in the past, what it means, and how many other communities might also have a similar waiver?
For this particular question, I will refer to Mr. Packard.
Okay.
That's why I do have staff to help.
Thank you.
I, I have, I believe 90-plus percent of the answer, but I want to give you 100% accurate answer.
Thank you.
Harvey Packard, again. 301H refers to a section of the Federal Clean Water Act, and the city of Morro Bay has operated under that section of the act for several years now. And what it does is that section of the Clean Water Act allows discharges to wastewater, discharges of wastewater to the ocean that do not meet complete secondary standards under certain conditions. So the city is operating under that waiver because it doesn't always meet full secondary standards. In past years, there were other waivers within the Central Coast Region. Galida was the last one. They have upgraded their plant, they no longer have a waiver, and Morro Bay is the only one in the Central Coast Region. There's not many left in the whole state. I don't know the exact number. Morro Bay's the last, says Ron. So that's what that is.
And the reason you gave it to us is so that we could be working on building a new plant that would in fact meet state standards, is that correct?
That's correct. It allows time for the city to get its plant upgraded and able to meet full secondary standards.
Okay. And you've given us that waiver and it's now expired, so you're essentially allowing us more time to, again, meet state requirements, correct?
The next permit that the Water Board issues will not include a 301H waiver. And we expect to have the board consider that permit at the end of this year, this calendar year. If the board adopts that permit as recommended, it will not have a waiver.
And you could start fining us.
And it will have, it will require the city to meet full secondary standards. It has, there is the possibility of giving the city an additional amount of time to meet those standards. And that was, that's what we call interim effluent limitations. So if the board, if the board considers that and agrees with that recommendation, the permit would include interim limitations that would allow the city to operate the old plant without penalty until either the new plant is finished or a maximum of five years has elapsed.
Okay. And can you tell us what the penalties are if we do not meet your requirements?
Once the final effluent limitations are in place, then failure to meet those limitations would result in a mandatory minimum penalty of $3,000 per day, per violation of each effluent limitation that is violated. They can rack up very quickly. The board has no discretion on whether to change those penalties. They have to apply the penalties.
And you could fine us additionally, is that correct?
Those are the minimum penalties. The board has discretion to increase those penalties up to $10,000 per day, per effluent limitation violation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Marlese. Any other questions from the council?
And I wanted to, you know, supplement Mr. Packard's comment that the, these penalties, we basically have a list, we have a guideline. So it's not as we start with a blank piece of paper. And we do have these minimum values and they're based on gallons per day of discharge in excessance, and so we really do not have options. The other point I wanted to make lastly is that, as indicated, we will be reviewing end of this year the permit. But of course, I'm not here to speak on behalf of the rest of my board member colleagues, but generally, these type of decisions of extension require very compelling evidence that, you know, we're not just kicking the can down the road, to be blunt about it. So you would, you will have to have, you know, very substantive evidence to justify this extension.
Okay. So in your view, just stopping the project and waiting for six months or longer would in fact not be a very good thing to do. We need to move along quickly, correct?
Time is not on your side, unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wolf. Thanks, Mr. Packard. Appreciate it. So council questions. Do you want to start off with questions? And we'll, we'll start off with questions and then we'll open up for, for public comment.
Did you want to start? Oh, okay, okay. I do have more. I do have more. I really wanted to start out by just clarifying some misperceptions that may be out in the community, and I think Dr. Wolf has just hopefully clarified one that is out there, and that is that continuing to just operate the existing plant indefinitely is not an option for us to consider. I would like Rob to tell us, or anybody else who would like to, why partnering with Cayucus on a joint plant is not an option for us to consider moving forward.
I don't really want to put words in the mouths of Cayucus, but from what I understand, they have proceeded forward with the project.
They can't hear you.
I don't want to put words in the mouth of Cayucus, but I understand that they have proceeded forward with purchase of a site. They are pursuing or have in line a USDA loan for their project, which requires a population of under 10,000. A combined project would have a service population of over 10,000, and they would not be eligible for that loan. That being said, I don't believe this council has ever closed the door on a joint project with, with Cayucus.
You know, I am wearing my "I love civil discourse" button tonight, and I really would like everyone to respect civil discourse while we're here, if that's not too much to ask. Okay. I would like to also clarify the process that led to the coastal, California Coastal Commission denying the permit. And I think the reason that this becomes really important in this conversation is that we have to be clear the sequence of events and how that came about. And I don't care who clarifies that, but if someone would, I would appreciate it. Just the sequence of events in terms of the staff, the Coastal Commission's staff recommendation, the action by the Morro Bay City Council to support the Coastal Commission's staff recommendation, and then the denial by the Coastal Commission 13 to nothing. So if someone can just lay that, the sequence of events out, so we all understand how that happened.
I'll give that a shot.
Okay.
You did a pretty good job of summarizing it for me, but I'll give that a shot.
Okay.
So the, the city had, was pursuing a, an upgrade project. In 2009, the issue of the reconstruction of the facility in the flood plain was addressed, and it was determined that the reconstruction of the facility and protection of the facility with a flood wall would cause a increase in water surface elevation or flooding of adjoining properties. The joint Morro Bay-Cayucus Sanitary District meeting gave direction to staff to move the project to the south and build a project where near or on the current sledge drying beds and a portion of the trailer storage area. We prepared a environmental document, an EIR, and commenced preliminary design on a project in that location. We pursued permits. This project is in what is known as the Coastal Appeals Jurisdiction, so the city is prime on issuing coastal development permit on this project, but that decision could be appealed to the Coastal Commission. The project was reviewed by our planning commission, it was denied by our planning commission, the project was then reviewed by the city council, it was approved by the city council, I believe four to one was the vote at that time. That coastal development permit that the city council approved was then appealed to the California Coastal Commission. It was appealed by some Morro Bay citizens, it was appealed by Surf Rider, and it was appealed by two coastal commissioners. We then went to a, what is called a substantial issues hearing. That hearing happened coincidentally on the day of the Fukushima earthquake and the tsunami that impacted the California coast. I remember that vividly because I got a call at three o'clock in the morning to come into work that day. We addressed the concerns of the tsunami and then got in the car and drove to a hearing in Santa Cruz. The Coastal Commission found substantial issue with the project and moved to hold a hearing at some point in the future on the merits of the project. During that intervening time between March of 2012 and January of 2013, city staff and our consultant team worked with coastal staff on defining that project. We believe, we understand that they had actually two teams working on that project, one working on a project that could be approved at the current location with mitigation measures, one that was denial. At the end of the day, they chose to recommend denial on the project. That went to a coastal commission hearing in January of 2013. Our new city council supported the coastal staff recommendation that the project be denied and that we could move on and move that project to address the concerns. The concerns, John may have to help me because I'm not sure that I'll get all of them. Coastal hazards, sea level rise, tsunami, storm surge were concerns. Inconsistency with the city's LCP. Did the city's LCP allow a wastewater treatment plant to be constructed there? Visual resources, archaeological resources, scenic resources.
I think that covers that pretty well and...
Except for inconsistency with the coastal plan.
Well, sure, which is part of the city's LCP being, yeah, in alignment there. So I'll let Rob finish, but I had a postscript to that.
And inconsistency with the coastal act, which is our LCP. The project was denied. We then spent the next few years getting to this point.
Right.
And I'm not going to summarize what John just summarized earlier in the meeting.
No, no, I didn't want you to do that. I just wanted you to do that because I want to clarify that the city council did not ask the Coastal Commission to deny this project. In fact, they voted to support the Coastal Commission staff decision. And I have the resolution here if we want to read it. And the reason I want to clarify that point is that those reasons for denying the permit are still there at the Coastal Commission. So this isn't just a simple matter of us saying, oops, before we asked you to deny it, and now we're going to ask you to bring the same thing back and approve it. That would be a tough road to hoe, and we would have to address all of those issues. Is that not correct? And we can see from the letter that the Coastal Commission has already written to us. It's not, it would be an, it would be tough. Is that right?
I, I don't think we could go to them with anything but a way that we're addressing all the issues that were brought up in their staff report. I think it would not only fall on deaf ears, but it wouldn't meet the standards for approving a project. We would, we would need to address each and every point that Coastal had for denying that project and come up with a suitable reason why it should be approved, either because we've modified the location slightly, or we have a rational explanation for what, and what mitigation measures can make up for that impact.
Okay.
And to that, I would add one thing. You know, you do have in front of you this concept of, well, maybe revisit the site. When the peer review panel brought that up, and they brought it up fairly, oh, well, yes, it's going to be cheaper. We had the choice at the staff level of saying, yeah, well, you know, we can't really consider that at all. But we really wanted them to throw it all out on the table, and so we thought it would be doing a disservice not to present something that was something they thought was important to consider. But we also knew and told them that we'd have to, we'd have a big hurdle with Coastal. And to build on what Rob said, part of the recommendation WRF CAC made was, yes, go, go talk to Coastal about this, but part of what we suggested as next steps, in order to even talk to them about it, we really need to do a little homework on refining a project that might meet those mitigation requirements before we could even talk to them without having them just tell us on its face, no, we're not going to do this. So there's some work to be done here.
Okay. All right. So with that backdrop in mind, I have some questions. First of all, when you were conducting analyses of alternative sites, did you look at the Dynegy property, the plant site, and what were your conclusions about that as a possible site?
We did look at that site. Where we focused on that site at that time was an area on the backside of the site that had no development. We didn't go into the idea, for example, of dismantling the plant and then rebuilding at that location. We, we learned from that, although it was going to be conceptually less costly, it had some significant issues, among them being cultural resources, also neighborhood concerns. We had across the street some residences which really became quite vocal at that time, early in the process. And for those and other reasons that relate to coastal proximity, it really fell out of the discussion fairly. of the discussion fairly early on.
And is there any other area on the Dynegy plant site where it's possible to build a plant, given that we're now talking about possibly a smaller footprint for the plant?
Well, I think the place we had focused on was the one big open relatively flat area to look at. Now, it's always possible to remove buildings and regrade the site, so we haven't gone there, to be clear, but yes.
Rob, can you add to that? Is there another possible?
See if I keep that microphone turned on and my mouth close to it and still look at this direction?
Thanks, Rob.
I think perhaps a area in close proximity to the existing site and on Dynegy property could be the Tank Farm, former Tank Farm location would be, could be suitable.
Okay. And is it on higher ground?
It's on slightly higher ground. It is actually in a lesser flood zone than the existing wastewater treatment plant. It's in a, what used to be known as a B-zone, so it's less than one foot of flooding across that property and not, doesn't have the same constraints as an A-zone, which is the 100-year flood. This would be the 500-year flood zone, so it doesn't have some of those limitations. There may be other constraints with that property. For one example, we don't own that property.
Right. And do you believe that the Rancho Colina site could still be considered a viable option for building a WRF?
I think it's as viable as South Bay Boulevard. It still requires a pump station and forced mains. And to consider significant cost savings, those are the two components that really need to be looked at and eliminated from the, from the process. That's where the lion's share of the savings comes from, is elimination of a major pump station and forced main brine line, effluent line back to the, the current facility area.
Okay.
And to that, I'd also want to add, though, there are some significant issues there. Where we would be limited to building, there would be significantly more earthwork. We'd also be very close to the nearby community there, which was not in the original concept. So we would be constrained on the site in different ways, for sure, in a way that we wouldn't to the same extent at South Bay.
Okay. And can you tell me why the Gianini site was not explored in greater depth in the options report?
Sure. Let me get that back to John.
Sorry, we only have one working microphone on this table here. Sure, we looked at the Gianini site, and we actually did look at it in some depth. And it was a relatively good site among the 17. It had some issues. It's similar in a way to Rigetti in that it's a steep site with a little flatter area at the bottom, which is where we'd be thinking about a site there. It's also very near, a few properties with homes right down there at the bottom. It would also require improvement to Little Morro Creek Road in a way that is unique among the sites. It would have required some roadway improvements that weren't accounted for. And even on the site where it could go, there were some cultural resource issues to consider, earthwork, and also you're at the toe of a neighborhood. Not that we thought that was that big a deal at that moment, but knowing what we know about Rigetti, I would imagine it would be similar issues as Rigetti if that played out today. That'd be my guess.
And just for the sake of the people that are here, can you tell us how far the Gianini site is from the current wastewater treatment plant? It's significantly closer, correct?
Than which? Than South Bay?
Yes.
Yes, it is. It's significantly closer, yeah. And I would say it's probably proximal wise, somewhere the Rancho Colina/Rigetti distance from the existing site, more or less.
It's closer.
A little closer.
Yeah, it's about a mile.
For sure.
Okay. And next question. Does staff have enough cost information and data in the facilities master plan, which I have here, and the water reclamation plan, and the peer review panel's identification of cost savings, to prepare an updated analysis of alternative sites?
When you say alternative sites, you mean sites we've either looked at but not in depth before?
Correct.
Things that are not, South Bay--
Sites that you've looked at in the options report, and yes. But looking at it now with better cost data, hopefully, which is in here since--
Right.
If anybody wants to see the appendix to this report, there is a detail of every cost possible in the South Bay site. Pipelines, lift stations, the whole thing.
I think I'd like Mike Nunley to answer that question.
Mike Nunley with MKN. As simple answers, yes, we could do another site alternatives analysis based on the unit costs that are in the master reclamation plan and also the facility master plan.
Right. So we have a pretty good sense at this point of what just the facility itself will cost, correct?
Yes, I feel that we do. Some, you know, some of the limitations could be, on some of the sites where we didn't have detailed surveying, we'd have to make some estimates on earthwork, that sort of thing.
Right. But you have good pipeline--
Good pipeline costs, concrete costs.
--and you would know if a lift station is required and that side of, so that we have good cost data here from which to do a better cost comparison than we did in the options report.
We have a lot more information--
Right.
--than we did at the time of the options report.
Okay. And what is the minimum amount of acreage that would be needed to build the plant?
In the, in the neighborhood of, you know, six to eight acres, somewhere in that neighborhood.
And this would be including facilities needed for recycling, or is this just for the wastewater treatment plant itself?
This would be, this would be including the full Phase Two.
Phase One and Phase Two.
Correct.
I, I've heard that that's high, that in fact, we wouldn't need that much acreage, but--
It's always possible to squeeze things down. I've seen wastewater treatment plants built in urban communities that are rather compact. As you, it really makes sense to compact your site when land costs are high, or if you're constrained to that. For example, building a wastewater treatment plant in downtown San Francisco has a different impact than in rural San Luis Obispo County. You might want to give yourself a little bit more elbow room to work because you're not constrained by the land costs. And in my opinion, land costs are not the significant cost driver with this facility. We could squeeze it down as tight as possible, but we may not want to do, go to those extreme measures and build it on an acre with everything stacked on top of each other if we didn't need to.
Yeah. And the only reason I'm asking is that when we do, if we do decide to do some alternative analyses, I don't want it to be that we are constrained by, we say it has to be at least six acres. That's all. I want us to be creative and say, we can put this on a smaller footprint, and if that's the determining factor, you know, we can squeeze it down, even though you might not want to.
The other, the other consideration, too, is, is the topography of the site, or the slopes on the site, and how much room we need for access roads and that--
Right.
--and those other items. So if it's a flatter site, we can get away with smaller amount of area that we need. If the access is relatively straightforward, we can get away with smaller acreage, so--
Okay.
I agree with Rob's comment.
Okay. And my last question. Are there any legal consequences of our backing out of the memorandum of understanding with the owner of South Bay?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marla. John?
I wanted to also thank the Regional Water Board folks for being here. Thank you so much for your presentation and information. They're very helpful, and certainly, I understand the predicament that you're in, as well as the predicament that we're in. Thank you also, Mr. Leibig, for spending a significant amount of time meeting with me on a couple of occasions to kind of go over the details of this. Could you just reiterate for me? We looked at 100-year floodplain recently in your office and properties that might be close to that, and I believe we were looking at the Hanson property. And I know that Marla asked about that, but could you reaffirm why, in your opinion, you thought that might be a viable site for moving the plant to, if we consider doing that?
As part--
I'm sorry, what it might take to mitigate the sea level rise issues, even though it's a higher plain?
Sure. As part of the analysis that we worked on for the existing site location, we did a very detailed, two-dimensional flow model to reanalyze the floodplain. Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA did that work back in the early 80s. We had additional information. We had new topo. We had better models now than they did back in the 80s. We analyzed the entire area and actually had FEMA change the flood maps of that area. Additionally, Coastal wanted us to change boundary conditions for that model. So the boundary conditions are, what constraints do you have when you model something? The FEMA model, all they cared about was average sea level. The Coastal Commission wanted us to model it with a 55-inch, four and a half-foot sea level rise and maximum storm surge occurring simultaneously. We ran that model. Because the site is fairly distant from the ocean, it's, you know, a third of a mile away, and there's a intervening frontal dune system between the site location and the ocean, those boundary conditions had no impact on many of the cells in that area. The cells that are on the Hanson site were exactly the same elevation in those two models. So it had about four tenths of a foot of, of 100-year flooding. That would require us, using our own flood damage prevention regulations, of placing 2.4 feet of fill on that area, because our regulations require us to be two feet above that flood elevation for security. That fill placed on that, that area, because it's in a backwater condition, would not impact adjoining properties outside of the regulatory parameters that we have to deal with. It may have increased the water surface elevation a hundredth of a foot. A hundredth of a foot in modeling is really noise. It's, it's, it has, it's meaningless. What FEMA regulations and what the city's regulations say is you can't increase cumulatively over a foot water surface elevation. And by placing four, you know, basically four tenths of a foot in the 100-year floodplain, and then two feet of fill on top of that, didn't displace the amount of water that would cumulatively increase the flooding on other properties a foot.
Thank you. That's very clear, by the way. For me, it is, yeah. And thanks again for reiterating that. The second question I have is that, do you recall the Coastal Commission meeting back in 2013? And do you remember the testimony that was given regarding the potential for increased rates in moving away from the existing site versus, or moving away from the existing site versus staying on that site? And, and an estimation was given as a rough estimate of how the rates might be impacted?
I'm sorry, I don't recall that. I remember that at that point in time, it was a, we were estimating a fairly small cost to move the facility. I'm recalling 12, $20 million that, but I could be remembering it completely wrong. I didn't review that information.
So, so the, the, the rate impact stated was somewhere in the range of $20 to $25. And that was a rough estimate based upon the knowledge that you had then--
Yes.
--I understand, which obviously the Coastal Commission used to make at least part of their decision in denying, I would assume, that, that the cost didn't appear to be significant in, in moving away from the existing site, which everybody understood based upon the data that they had. It wasn't that significant.
Like I said, I didn't review that information. I apologize.
All right, that's okay. That's okay. So the other question I have for you is, with regard to other projects in the state, are you aware of any projects in the last two, three years that have either been redone within the coastal zone and/or new ones completed that may, might be in similar situations that we are having to rebuild on a site within the zone?
I believe that Mike's firm did put a list together. Ones that come to mind are Pismo's facility, the South County Sanitation District work that was performed, and then Mike probably has a few more in his list.
Sure. Some recent ones are the Galita Sanitation or Sanitary District, their wastewater plant upgrade. That was completed in 2016, and that was a, and the regional board folks can correct me if I'm wrong, but they were originally on a 301H waiver similar to us, upgraded to full secondary. That was a recent project completed. South County Sanitation District recently pursued a secondary, an upgrade to their existing secondary treatment plant process and received a, a permit from Coastal Commission for, a coastal development permit for that project. One of the conditions was, they have a 30-year allowance on that permit. At the end of the 30 years, they need to come back and show they've done a number of studies, and they've confirmed that the sea level rise and flooding and some other issues haven't been significant. So they do have that condition. The, let's see, some others. Bear with me for a second. Carpentry, Sanitary District replaced, did some minor work in 2016. Carmel Area Wastewater District, they finished, they're working through a $15 million upgrade now of their plant. And then, and so those are, those are some recent ones that are either in process or recently completed, that are in our current Regional Water Quality Control Board's region that we know of.
Good. Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that. So there have been a number of projects that the Coastal Commission has approved recently within the zone, it sounds like.
That's correct. As, as, as you know, and I won't, you know, I'm not, I'm not the permitting expert. I'll ask John to, to correct me here, but every, every case is different, and every project's different. Every location's different, so--
Of course.
But those are projects that have been approved.
Thanks so much. Appreciate that. Mr. Leibig, I gave you some Perk Water information that I had gotten from the president of Perk Water. Did you have a chance to review that?
Yes.
Give us some estimates on a, a small site facility that was, and a lot of detail wasn't given, I realize that, but can you comment on that at all in terms of cost and viability, et cetera, et cetera?
Their cost for their facility is about $55 million. They-- They estimated about a 30% contingency on top of that. I think facility costs are, and that's a tertiary facility, no water reclamation. I think we're talking similar numbers on facility costs to what we're proposing there. Perk Water is, it would be like California Water, like Seven Seas, a few other companies come to mind. Is it just a different delivery model? They would design, build, operate, perhaps finance a facility. And it could be something that the city might want to investigate.
The, just, in terms of the information we discussed, the total was about a $68 million project with the contingency-
Yes.
-of 25%. So, okay, good. And do you think it feasible to, for us as decision-makers, do you think it's reasonable and feasible to go back to Coastal and ask the question, given the fact that you're not going to have enough time to redo a master plan on a possible new site, but we've heard the information that you might be able to gather in 60 days? Do you, as our lead engineer, city engineer, believe that that's a reasonable step to take for this council with regard to a pause, realizing that pauses cost money, et cetera?
It is a risk. Is it a risk that we want to take with this project? And I'm talking cost risk. Construction costs escalate every day. But based on preliminary information, this is a significant cost savings by eliminating pump station and forced main. If we can address coastal issues, or at least maybe not in the two months' time, but have a discussion with them how we would address those issues with a project that would be located proximally to the existing wastewater treatment plant, I think it's a risk worth investigating.
And to that, I would add one thing. You know, if we're going to approach Coastal, I think it's a reasonable, rather than to fish in the dark, to figure out exactly what it is they're looking for. I think we go in saying, what are the conditions under which you could support a project in this area? What are the things, the performance standards we would need to meet to get there? That would allow us to understand what the design challenges would be and not waste as much time trying to figure it out and getting it wrong. I think there's a preliminary discussion. We had a letter today from Coastal Commission. Their initial take was, we're surprised you're even considering going back. Now, you've done nothing yet, but they are aware that this is a possibility. So this is, there's a little preliminary discussion just to get on the same page before we could get there. So is 60 days reasonable? Perhaps. But I think we can get, we can cut to the chase a little bit by asking the questions on the design issues to see if there's a possibility.
And just to clarify, maybe to explain why Coastal was surprised by this, we didn't feel that we had authority to, from our council, to proceed wholeheartedly onto investigating the existing site. So we approached it tentatively. We wanted to come through this meeting, getting authorization from council prior to having those discussions with Coastal.
And I totally understand that. And I think the comment by the Water Quality Board representative was it's not unusual for that to be their first response. Realizing also, and clarification for the audience, that that was a letter that was received just today and there's been no discussion with them at all by our staff. And we certainly understand your constraints, so, and I don't want to get into discussion, but I get it. So, so the answer to the last question was yes, after everything that Mr. Rigoban answered. You feel that as our fiduciary, that this is a good move to make the 60-day pause?
That is my opinion.
Great. Thanks. No further questions. Your honor?
Yes, sir. All right. Matt?
All right. Rob, I've got some questions. You've already answered a lot of these, but just for putting it out there, I want to put them again to you if you don't mind. First of all, as we go through this process, could we talk a little bit about the 218 process, 218 from 2015?
Sure.
So we passed that 218 vote, and why did we do that vote?
The impetus to head down the rate process and culminating in this 218 protest vote, it started with our water rates. We were not meeting our debt coverage ratio for our water bonds with, for the state water project. We were also in deficit spending. We were pulling, the last year before the rate increase went into effect, $900,000 out of reserves to pay operating costs. That is not a sustainable venture to be in if we want to maintain the viability of our water fund. We also knew that we had a very expensive project. We were also still partnered with Cayucus at that time. We had an estimate for a $75 million secondary treatment plant that could be placed on the Rancho Colina property. And the rate analysis used three-quarters of that for Morro Bay's share in that rate structure. So approximately $56 million share of a $75 million project was what fed into the WRF or wastewater treatment plant portion of the project. There is a little bit of flexibility with that number in that rate structure. We could defer collection system capital improvements and perhaps fund a $65 or $75 million project. But that was not the original intention of that Prop 218 vote. The original intention of the sewer side of it was to get the rates pointed in the right direction. Until we were done with the facility's master plan, that way we could go back with another rate increase or rate adjustment, depending on what the outcome of that facility's master plan was and those costs. We had very, we had costs based on a 0% design at that point in time.
All right. So with that, knowing that in the following two years, we passed this 215, 218 vote, we were correcting the rates that hadn't been raised for 20 years, but we were running at a deficit. And I do believe we spoke the other day, and we were running at a deficit. The last year was $900,000, but we'd been running a deficit for the previous five years, I do believe.
Correct.
So collectively, that goes back to 2009, if not before that, we were running at a deficit. So we had to do that 215 to correct that and plan for the future, is what you're saying?
In, on the water fund.
Got it. Okay. And so now I'm going to switch gears here and want to talk, and then perhaps, Jeff, you might want to pipe in here, too. One thing, when we start talking about the Hanson site and the site with the existing wastewater treatment plant, why was the Hanson part of that parcel never considered?
It's basically this jointly-owned CSD Morro Bay property. In our estimation, it's the same set of constraints as the sledge drying beds.
However-
And the direction that we received was to pursue alternative sites and coastal retreat.
Got it. Okay. But then, however, looking at the flood data, that site is slightly different than the existing site, including the sledge beds, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So with that, now, with the two months, and I think John and Marlis kind of asked these questions, with the existing, since we've done, this would be essentially our third planning of a wastewater treatment plant in the past 11 years. We've done at least two past EIRs. Would those EIRs be usable as we approach Coastal?
I think data from those EIRs would be usable. I don't think the actual EIR would be usable. I think there's good data and good studies in those. Soil conditions really haven't changed out there. Archaeological resources probably haven't changed. So those studies are usable on, depending on where the final site that's in proximity is, I think many, much of that work would be transferable to a new project.
And, go ahead, Jeff.
I'd want to be careful on that. Some data will be transferable, but even the most recent EIR was from 2011 and '12, so it's already six, seven years old. From a sequoist standpoint, that's an old EIR. But all that to say, one thing we've done is we've held off ESA, the EIR prepares, from going down the road yet. So, you know, they're going to do an EIR somewhere. So it's not a question of likely significantly increased costs by doing EIR there as opposed to South Bay Boulevard as the primary site. We would just direct the focus there if that becomes the direction to go.
And in terms of groundwater reclamation and injection wells, the one, I mean, the site that Marlis you bring up in terms of the Dynegy property and/or this Hanson site, we're going to, the proximity to our existing wells, obviously, we're going to be closer. So those costs can, will be significantly less. My question is, I don't know, do we have our regional water control fellows here? Yeah, I think we do. My question is, can this be, although the cost, if we got to go to this site, would be significantly less, is there a possibility of having a tiered or segmented part of doing the construction where we could do X this year and then phase it in over years?
So breaking the reclaimed water component into phases where we might provide X number of acre-feet one year and then increasing it as time goes on?
Sure. And we could start at zero and then move into that.
It's certainly technically feasible. Whether it is permissible, I don't know the answer to that question.
So since cost is one of the biggest issues here, and it's not necessarily monetary cost to the community, but then we're also talking about the various environmental costs that Coastal is concerned about, in terms of the two-month timeframe that we're talking about, in terms of speeding up this process and going to Coastal, could we also, in terms of getting these other ancillary groups together like Surf Rider, like Sierra Club, could we be able to show them, hey, this is what we're planning? And instead of getting any sort of opposition, perhaps we could get buy-in from them? Would that be feasible within those two months?
I think that would be fantastic if we could buy in in two months. I don't know if that's realistic. I think we definitely would meet with them and show them what we're proposing to do, get as much buy-in as they're willing to give. But, what I'm trying to say, it will not be an easy process.
I'm totally with you, and I understand, I mean, this is an uphill battle. I understand that. Sorry. There you go. This is an uphill battle. I understand that. And so, but we want to put all the, we got to put everything into this to get this going. Last couple of questions. Sorry to take so much time. In terms of water displacement from the various environmental situations, be that tsunami and/or flood, what sort of, is this area, is it possible for adapted mitigation for those environmental concerns? I know with Coastal, when this was denied, said, wow, you're right there. You're in the floodplain, the tsunami. We wanted to move inland to mitigate that. Could we build into this site swales, wetlands that would address those needs? Is that possible?
The major way that we're going to mitigate for coastal hazards, flood risks, tsunami, is elevating the site. That's not to say that there might be some environmental enhancement project that we could do in that area that would provide a benefit to the stream system down there. But the way we want to protect the site is by, there's two ways that we could protect the site, flood wall or elevating the site. My recommendation would be elevating the site, not making a depressed island in the middle of flooding.
Okay, sure. That makes sense. Although in terms of the ancillary costs of pushing that water out to the surrounding area is going to be problematic with Coastal. Yes?
I don't believe that, if we're talking Hanson, because of its location, we would not be causing an impact on the surrounding properties. It's similar to the sledge drying bed area where it's in a backwater situation and we're not in the flowing area of the floodplain, so it doesn't have as much of an impact on the surrounding properties. We're not going to be increasing the flood on the high school by a foot like we were with the original rehab project.
And I would add, you know, to piggyback on your last couple of questions, a lot of those two months, I suspect, will be taken up in an iterative dialogue with Coastal where we first want to understand what their base concerns are. And then we've got to go back to the drawing board and understand how to address those in a preliminary design fashion to the point where they can see it to see where it's going and then provide us meaningful feedback, which Coastal staff is sometimes reluctant to do until we have enough cards on the table to understand. So we're not sure we'll get there, but we know there's a process that we'd have to follow, and we follow it where it goes, but, you know, understand that going into it.
Okay. Two more questions, Red, sorry. In terms of the cost savings for this site, and Rob, and do we, with this Hanson site, and we talked the other day, in terms of an MBR plant, and you had said there needs to be a retention tank, what was it called, the X?
We need to provide flow equalization-
EQ tank.
-to that MBR process because our flow variation is so wide, that MBR process does not like swings in flows like that. We would have to overbuild the MBR process without sufficient equalization.
So with that, and I think the other day you mentioned an EQ tank of two or, I understand it's just preliminary, of two to three million gallons. And if so, if we did that with an MBR plant on that Hanson site, is there sufficient space there to do that?
Between the Hanson site, the, and already property that the city either owns or has an interest in, I believe that we would need to use some of the trailer storage area for some facilities, but there is sufficient site area to do that work.
Okay. Last question. In terms of our previous 218 vote in 2015, you mentioned that we have, for sewer, we have a built-up fund right now. And so to understand that 218 process, that money has not just been going down a black hole, we actually have a built-up, the savings that we can, we will be able to use of how much?
That's in our, one of these handouts that we have out there. And the fund balance in the sewer accumulation fund is currently 2.1 million? Am I reading that correct? No, I'm not.
Want me to jump in here, Rob, real quick?
Excuse me?
Want me to jump in real quick?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the backside of the handout that has the colorful pie charts, so if you look under two titled "Fund Balance," that top graph titled "Sewer Accumulation Fund," you can see the beginning and ending cash balance for each of the fiscal years listed on there. And you'll note the middle year has an asterisk by that. FY 1516 is when these new sewer rates were put into effect, essentially. So you can see the fund balance growing from the start of that fiscal year of 4.209 up to the start of the current budget year, which is still, again, an approximation because we haven't closed out the previous fiscal year, 1617, at 8.3 million. So it's roughly doubled over a couple of years. So it's roughly doubled over a couple of years. And if you look down to the bottom of the page, you'll see, under this graph titled Sewer Rate Revenue, there's the breakdown of that incremental amount we've gained as a result of the increases in sewer rates of, we're assuming, just over 4 million for three full fiscal years, closing current fiscal year 1718. So you can see, to your point, we have been gaining a lot of that increase in revenue as fund balance. So it's not just going away.
Okay. I have a whole bunch more to ask, but I'll just wait till discussion and then, so, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
Rob, do we have any indication that the Coastal Commission takes cost to the populace into consideration in their decision-making?
My understanding is not directly, but we have to be able to build a project. Currently, it appears that we would have difficulty funding a $167 million project on South Bay Boulevard site. Would we be able to fund something less than that and achieve some level of coastal retreat but not provide reclaimed water? We've heard from the Regional Board, that's not their desire, is to have a project that doesn't provide reclaimed water. The answer to the question is, do they take funds into consideration? I think, no, not directly, but the reality is, they have to. Because communities have to be able to build these projects.
Okay. Do we know the cost of the Los Osos plant, exclusive of the sewer infrastructure that they put in from home to home?
Do we, Mike, did we get that information? I believe we have that.
And what I'm looking for is, is an apples-to-apples, what they built compared to what we need to build?
We don't have that directly from the county as of yet, that breakdown of the final construction costs or their engineering estimate.
Do we have any information as to the monthly rate that Los Osos customers are paying for, now that their plant is complete?
Anecdotally, in the $160-ish dollars a month for sewer rates. That, the county doesn't bill for water in Los Osos, so that's sewer only.
And is, does that include all of the capital costs and the O and M?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Great. First, just want to thank the peer review panel for meeting on that. Mike, you want to answer to the cost?
Yes, sir. It took us a minute to find it, but the cost for the water reclamation facility for Los Osos, and this included the right-of-way, property acquisition, engineering and design, construction management, the plant itself, onsite stormwater management, the onsite recycled water components, but none of the recycled water pipeline offsite. Oxidation ditch, which is their main treatment process, tertiary treatment and their disinfection was 72 million for the plant itself.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Before I get going on my questions, just wanted to say thanks to the peer review panel, Rob, in coordinating that, and we need to give a shout out to them, take the time. Hopefully, it was a good lunch for all the work. I want to thank staff for preparing the documents. We've got some great information. I know it took a lot of work to do that, and there's a lot of late work to do that as well. So I just want to give a shout out and thanks to staff on that. So, one of the first questions I had, had to do with the two-month pause. And the question earlier was, is it realistic? And I guess I just want to get into those expectations and think that we're starting for two months and it takes two months and 10 days, two months and 15 days. When we set these expectations and it goes, you know, a little bit over, I just don't want to be, in our community, to be disappointed and frustrated. So I want to understand, when we are setting a date for two months and saying, this is realistic, if we come in less than those realistic expectations, it's a little disappointing. So I just, I just want to make sure what we're agreeing to.
Sure.
If that is what we agree to.
The two-month estimate was based on a desire to move rather quickly, but without any conversation with Coastal. We really don't know what their review timeframe would be like. We believe that we can put the information together and have this discussion with them. And the caveat to that is, they're willing to work with us and work expeditiously also, as we are.
These are the types of things that need to be clear before we agree to do this. With the Water Board here articulating that they're willing to work with us, and the timeliness of this, we're setting expectation of two months. And, you know, based on that, we, the unknown is whether or not Coastal will be able to work that quickly. So we need, we really do need to be, it may be realistic for us to get the data together, but there are no assurances that we can have the results done in two months. And I think we need to understand that, our, as a council, as a community, and the Water Board, if they're willing to be patient with us for two more months, and we come back and we say, well, it's going to be three more months. And so, those are things we need, and I think we'll have time to, we'll have our questions, we'll have some public comment, and there'll be, we'll need to take a recess here in a minute, but maybe some time to give some thought to that. The other thing that came to mind is, if we have that two-month time and we do have that feedback with Coastal, as I understand it, then it could take a few more months based on that feedback. And we don't know what that is, because they could say, yep, we need to see this, this, and this, and now we have to go do that, and it's going to take a few, you know, whatever the time is. So we're not just entering into a two-month agreement and coming back with a defined answer, as I see it. And I just want to understand that clearly.
I think our intention was to determine within the first two months whether it's actual, a feasible approach to take. The recommendation from our Citizen Advisory Committee was, if after two months, it's not feasible to proceed with the South Bay Boulevard site.
Okay. I'll probably...
And to that, yeah, I think that's exactly right. It's easier to, we assume, we're going to be pushing on the idea, tell us the path to yes if there's a path, but if there's a, but if it's no, we want to know that as soon as possible. But even a path to yes, obviously, it's the Coastal Commission. Things at the staff level may be different at the board level, especially for sensitive locations like this. We've run down that path before. So we need to go in with that, with our eyes open, if that's the direction to go. But to your question, we're going to try to get as, answer as we can get within two months and report back to you.
So I have a list of discussion points at the point when we get to that, that could draw out that two-month request, if we were wanting more information. And, you know, we'll have to get to that during the discussion point for my thoughts. I know there was a question about, so is it, is it realistic to think that the current rate structure could fund a plant at the current site? If we were at the current site, could, based on what we know, would the current rate structure fund that?
No.
Okay. And we'll have to, and we'll, we'll be asking for more validation in that, but in our estimation, we're going to have to look at a 218 vote to increase rates to some degree, and we're looking for the minimum degree, but we're, what we have now is not going to fund it. And to your point earlier, we knew that we would be coming back to make that, that adjustment.
After we had completed a facilities master plan, and we knew, had more detailed information on costs.
Okay. So, this is kind of a, I'll just ask the question anywhere, because it's, I'll blame it on Matt, because he gave me the question thought, but he was talking about EIRs. And so we were talking about what is useful out of those EIRs. And we were talking about possible sites west of Highway One, and we discussed the Hanson site. And my question is, there is an EIR from Duke Energy to build a power plant in that back quadrant. Would that EIR, should be a public document, because they went for permitting, would that EIR have valuable data to inform some idea of that for a viable site?
My quick answer is yes, but I'm going to stay out of trouble and let the planner answer that question.
Yeah.
Let's be clear, EIRs that are not on topic of the project itself.
Yeah.
Have limited utility for a project.
Sure.
But where the utility lies.
That's my point.
Is background information about cultural resources, biology, flood hazard, that could be applied to a project here. So we have to make sure we don't overstate the utility of documents that don't really apply.
You know, I understand, so there's some value. It may, it may help in refining a determination. Okay. And then, the other part is, we feel, within two months, it's realistic to determine what a new footprint might be at or near the existing wastewater treatment plant in some way, shape, or form. That would be out of the floodplain. It would include, based on comments from WRF CAC, so it would have to be out of the floodplain, whether or not Phil was brought in. We don't know if resiliency armoring would be required, but at what point would you factor in that? And how do you, and then that, there goes another point to the, you know, we have to absorb that, we have to add that into the cost. And can you comment on that?
The locations that we're talking about are somewhat remote from the brunt of sea level rise, right on the beach. I don't believe that resiliency armoring, per se, is going to be required. We're not going to build a seawall to protect the site. In my opinion, the best protection for the site is the elevation of the site outside of the floodplain. I think we have natural protection from things like tsunami there with the frontal dunes. We have done, with the last project, a little bit of analysis on showing what that impacts due to the most probable high-event wave would be onto that site. And elevation of the site is what the protection choice that I would make would be.
Okay. And then, my last question, and so, appreciated that during the peer review, that there was kind of an open format that went beyond just the cost estimating, which has obviously led to this, okay, well, let's look at, going back to the existing site, that's the cheapest one. We knew that five years ago. But we, to your point, we didn't discuss land use policies history. We didn't discuss, as I understand it, the Rigetti site, the Giannini site. Is that accurate?
That's true. We did not look at other...
So there really wasn't additional creative input into what those options would look like?
What prompted that discussion on the existing site was elimination of a large pump station in Forest Maines.
I understand.
Some of the other sites that we talked, we just talked about include those.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I'll conclude my questions. Folks, it's quarter to nine. We've got about an hour's worth of public comment. I just want to check with council, anybody else, whether or not, once we start public comment, it'd be probably nice to continue? Would it be, just looking for staff and council, whether or not we would need to take a recess and, five-minute recess? Let's do that. Let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and we'll start our public comment. We've got about an hour's worth of, hour's worth of public comment. All right, folks, thanks. All right, back to public comment. I think we're having, based on the slips, we've got a little bit over an hour of public comments. So I'll call out the names, and if you please come up, come forward. Dana will set the clock. I know as you get, the beeper might go out. I'll, you know, work with you as you keep going, as you keep talking through that, I'll just ask you to wrap it up, and then we'll get through it, and we'll do it that way. So first off, Rick Sauerwine.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I welcome the opportunity to address you briefly here tonight to talk about some of my observations of this project and how they evolved over the years, and how important I think it is for us not to pause in this process. We need to move the process forward, full speed ahead. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't take the time, I'm sorry, Rick Sauerwine, local resident, and let me resume from there, to say that just because we don't pause and we move forward, doesn't mean that we can't and shouldn't address the concerns of everybody in this room. I think everybody recognizes that affordability of this project is incredibly important, and not just to our personal pocketbooks, but also the viability of Morro Bay as a vibrant community, where we can continue to do business at an affordable rate. So we need to look at those things, but I think we need to move this project out of the planning room. We need to move forward in a direction that takes us to cost reality. And I think that there's a method to do that, that's really not very far from the recommendations that the staff has offered here. The one twist that I would take in the approach is to take a step toward moving forward with an RFP for the Design-Build Contract, and making that a multi-step process where we engage the industry and the professionals that know about cost reality in building these buildings and structures. And we use that team to value engineering up to four or five sites. sites. Now, we've taken an approach right now where we've said, we've got to have a site, and that's a very traditional approach, no question about it. It's the ideal way to do a project, but we're not in an ideal situation anymore. And so, I think if we give, in this RFP, some direction to the industry, that we have multiple sites for consideration, we have multiple project goals that the community desires, we weight those goals based on their importance to the community, we sit down in developing that RFP with the Coastal Commission and the Water Board, to make sure that once we get this done, we have a product that will allow the staffs of those respective agencies to move forward with a solid recommendation to their respective boards. I think that way we move forward, but we still address the concerns. There's a lot to be worked out, but I'll cut it off with that.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks.
Jeff Heller, and then Bob, Bob Dorr? Is Bob here, or just Barbara? Okay.
Jeff Heller, I'm sure you could hardly wait to hear what I have to say tonight. I know I'm your favorite speaker. You've been through a lot, and we've got a problem. And I agree with Mr. Sourwine's approach 100%, and if, we've talked about this for months and months, we will not know the costs until we involve contractors. We have enough information now to put out an RFQ/RFP to three or four sewer contractors, and have a number within a few weeks. Whether you call that a pause or not, I don't care, it's time to get this thing done. Stop talking about what it's going to cost. We still don't know where it's going to go, we don't have a lot of options, we need to find a place for it, but contractors, I've talked to three or four different contractors independently, not identifying this project, but giving them the flow numbers and then their, other information that's been developed by the consultants, told them it was a coastal community, I said, is this enough information for you to bid on it? They said, yes. Put the project out to bid. Until that happens, we have no idea what this project is going to cost, and we're wasting time arguing about it. Put it out to bid. The next issue is what can we afford? What if we can't afford the numbers that come back? We certainly can't afford $100 million, that's completely out of the question. I think it's a $50 million project. And I challenge, I challenge the council to prove me wrong by putting this out to bid. Would our group support a $50 million project? I don't know, maybe if the financing's right over 40 years, we might be able to swing it, we could support the project. But we have to get the real numbers. I agree with Mr. Sourwine. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Barbara, I have Barbara and Bob Dorr. Is it just Barbara? Okay, so I'm going to put Bob to the side, okay.
No, don't do that. Barbara Dorr. He got tired, and so did our grandson. Our grandson was at the Coastal Commission hearing, thought he should be here tonight and learn a little bit about politics. Okay, to begin with, in the old numbers, the $124 million project with financing would have been $177 million, and the $167 million project with all the recycling and nice stuff would have been $248 million with financing. That was standard bonds, which is outrageous. Prices are outrageous, it's totally unaffordable for this community. I've sort of felt that, that way from the first day I heard it. But I guess when I, I looked at what I had, and what I'd really like to emphasize, I've done a lot of looking online at some of the 218 notices, and how they handle those, and how they're formatted, and, you know, how much data they put in, and some of the different rate structures. But some of them actually put a ballot. We know it's an election, but it's a protest election. Most people don't want to protest, they don't want to come up here, they don't want to be disagreeable. But some of the cities actually provided a protest ballot, instead of just saying, here's, go to the bottom and you can find out how to protest, and this is the information you have to provide. They actually provided a ballot attached to the information, so you could cut it off and mail it in. And if it's an election, I know that's a legal process, but it is a better way to get a real feeling, to know how your community feels. You know, if 50% of the people vote, those people are all yes votes, votes on this project. I mean, if they don't vote, the people who stay at home at an election and don't vote, it's probably around 50% or less, but that's all a yes vote, for whatever you want to charge them. So I think in fairness, you should send out a ballot. City of San Diego actually had a very nice one attached, it's online. There was another nearby, something Sandow or Pandow Valley, and they had one also, but the one from San Diego was very nice, I think it was about, so you'd search on a 2014 for the year, but that would be beneficial. I really hope you make a motion tonight to also include looking at whatever you can on the Dynegy site, because they are going to be gone, they are gone, they are closed, and let's find some use there. Get it away, hide it, put some trees, put some stuff around it, and maybe the price can be less at that site. But in, in the cost reductions that you had, obviously we care about, you know, the kids in the community, and a lot are active with our grandson, and a lot of the sports activities, but some of it was eliminating odor control to save money, but I think that's the last thing we want to do anywhere in this community, is eliminate odor control. Financing is outrageous, there is controversy in the community, and the peer group gave very good recommendations on that, on not being able to get the financing, the cheap financing, and that the community could not afford the $250 a month with 6% of the annual, the 50K average income in our community. Here's some of the things I've said on this sheet, but thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Barbara.
But please, take your time, stop the project, and cut the cost down to the 75 million.
Thanks, Barbara. Rob Kitzman, and then Lynn Valley, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rob Kitzman, I'm a resident and business owner here in the city of Morro Bay. I own and operate our third-generation family business, Culligan Water. I'd like to start with just saying, obviously, a $167 million sewer plant is, it's a harder road to hoe than fighting or figuring a way to work with or around the Coastal Commission. I sent an email to the council that has some specific impacts that just the current proposed rates of water, not additional, but current proposed rates for over these next few years, are going to have on our business. We are a business of 13 people, most, 12 of those are full-time positions. There's, we are probably one of the, I don't know what the percentage is, but I'm sure we're on the larger end of the scale when it comes to employers of full-time head of household jobs. The, the impact currently, we currently spend sewer and water together, we are, our current bill is of around $40,000 per year. With the increase just proposed, which we have heard does not cover the costs, the sewer building costs, we're looking at an increase on top of that of $32,000 per year. Our business has been here for 55, oh, 57 years. We provide, I, many people feel a valuable service to the community, and we're, we have been a very active member of the community in terms of donating, and helping, and being involved with a lot of different projects. Let me give you an equivalent, that breaks down just the increase, that increase of $2,700 per month is the equivalent wage of one full-time $16 per hour person that I cannot hire, that I need to hire, but I can't hire them because of that increase. And that's just the proposed amount. So you double that, now we're talking about two employees. That's, that's over 15% of my, of my labor force. It would take at our current, and these are people that live and work and shop and spend money here in town. It would take over 150 new accounts for me to make up the lost profit of those, that increase, and that's just the current rate increases that are already scheduled, that's not the addition. Since other homeowners, who are, 90% of my customers are residences, residential customers, would be saddled for $250 increase, we'd be looking at greatly reduced capacity of the growth. And the last point is, as I wrap this up, is that I don't have the option of just raise, passing all that cost on to my customers as a city who does not have competition, does. So I'm asking that you would consider the economic impact, not just on the residences, but the businesses, and to keep the economic engine, which I think is already suffering in this community, to help that, help that economic community. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Lynn Valley? Charvey Gardner? Charles Gardner? Sorry. Charvey. Charles.
Hi, my name's Charlie Gardner, and I'm from Half Moon Bay, about four hours up the coast here.
Oh, that's just up near you.
And I'm, would like to represent as an impartial third party, but maybe I can share some of my experience and observation expertise. And I'm a contractor. I've been following this project for the last six years, and here in the last year, it looked like, you know, that the project is going forward, and I work for a major contractor, and we're interested in the job, so full disclosure, but it really doesn't matter to us where you build it that much, it's just that when it gets built, we'll be interested in it. I wanted to share, we formed a design-build team that's going to be very formidable, and this is a tracked target job. But I got to tell you, there's other jobs, there's going to be three projects in the first quarter of 2018 going off in this area, with San Luis Obispo with the treatment plant, I'm sure you're aware of, Orkut's got a plant, and then this one. And to be honest with you, not to cast any dispersions, Cayucus has not been a target job. It's been kind of so dyslexic that most of the contractors have just said, stay away, not bidding. But this is a business opportunity, I've, I, actually, before I came down here, just to come to this meeting, because, you know, I heard that there was some discussions as to maybe re-siting the plant, I've got four projects that I'm currently managing in Calif, well, Seattle, Sacramento, Sausalito, and Huntington Beach. But I've done, I've been 40 years in this business, and I've done treatment plants 98% of the time, and a lot in the coastal area. And I live in Half Moon Bay, and I could tell you from my own experience in dealing with the Coastal Commission, with the stuff that I see here with going back to the Coastal Commission after a denial four years ago, and the letter that you guys received today, two months is probably going to be two years, because you're going to have to do a lot more surveys and studies, and they're going to require a lot of, a lot of work to, to do that. Now, that may not sound very appealing, but I'm just, you know, saying, be, be ready for a lot of work to do that. I'm not advocating one place or another, maybe you can find an alternative site. It's just been my experience, because Half Moon Bay did that too, and it was about two years to get their plant run back through, all the, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Water Rec Board is, is right. Now, there are options that you could consider, and I think a couple of people presented them earlier, is you could do an early procurement of a design-build contractor, and get them on board for pre-construction services to do a real constructibility survey, to get you alternative sites, what it would be an accurate cost study, that you can make further informed decisions upon. And, and that's one thing that my business does. We, we've done design-build constructibility services that relate, that related back right into the construction of the site. So, not advocating one site or another, just saying that, you know, just want to give you the benefit of my experience of what you might be looking at, for whatever it's worth. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gardner, I'd hopefully leave a business card with our staff. Thanks. Richard Sadowski? And then Patty Anderson?
Richard Sadowski. I'm on the WRF-CAC, and my comments were basically not even presented, which is, you know, really disappointing. But some of my comments at the WRF-CAC, for instance, with the LCP amendment, you're going to need an LCP amendment if you're going to put a lift station the size of a small house near there, okay? So that's, that's a wash. As far as Hanson site, I've been a proponent of the Hanson site for a long time, and if you get on www.morrobaywrf.info, there's a, there's some information there, and there's the flood studies from 2009, the flood studies from 2012 as well there. And regarding the, the CCC, this, the Coastal Commission, I said this at the WRF-CAC too, the Coastal Commission, after I appealed the closure of the MTBE wells, the Coastal Commission came back with a letter and said that the city in their EIR has to look at that 60-40 line that's polluting our drinking water aquifer. I'm surprised that the Regional Board has left already, because that would be a place where they could help us getting grant funding, because we would be restoring a drinking water aquifer, okay? We tied that in, that project right in with a Hanson, with a package plan on the Hanson site, and then we're good to go. I mean, back a few years ago, when we were looking at the updates, we were looking at $26 million, then it went up to $34 million, and then $36 million with tertiary in the nearby sites, okay? And now it's $128 million, but, you know, there's a reclamation component, so what is that? $80 million for a reclamation component and injection wells? Seems out of the, seems out of the ballpark there. So, the, and on the other issue, that Coastal Commission, and, you know, I've talked to the Coastal Commission, but I also talked to the Ocean Protection Council, and California is serious about AB 32, okay? Putting in a lift station there, that's going to take way more energy to pump sewage around, that's going to be a factor that they're going to have to deal with, okay? And that's why putting a site near, near the existing site is a huge, a really viable option, especially in California. If you're in Texas, where they don't care, that's one thing, but California is taking AB 32 seriously, and the greenhouse gas issue seriously. So, energy costs are going to have to be dealt with. Also, your estimates on the South Bay site do not take in count, do not take into account maintenance and operations, okay? And as a first responder to sewage emergencies, your, 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 your costs for that are going to go up, okay? So, you know, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Patty Anderson? Patty? Okay. Bob Keller? Bob didn't leave.
Mayor, City Council members, my name's Bob Keller, resident of Morro Bay. Anyway, I know we want to do a pause, but I'm afraid of pauses, because they lead to more pauses down the line, and I'm always concerned about costs, and to me, a pause is like a void and delay. But anyway, we've been looking for sites over like the last five, six years, I believe, and we studied already 17 sites or more, and every site have issues. Thought we had the right site at Rigetti, but to do to all the issues, it was then taken off the table, not once, but twice. Now we have a site at South Bay Boulevard, but we find out it's going to be more costly because of the distance, where other sites are closer, and, but maybe not available. Anyway, the compatibility problem is always a problem on all sites, so with the EIR, we have to be careful of that. I am concerned about costs. Anyway, one thing about costs, sometimes short-term costs are higher than long-term costs. If we build the right facility, and we can make it last for, like I say, a lifetime, but they don't last lifetimes, but even maybe for a century, our costs would be not as expensive we think they are, if we look at the long term. And I'm a, I'm a senior, like the rest of us in this town- And I'm a senior like the rest of us in this town, and I feel for people, I mean, I don't want to pay any more than anybody else. And I would like the council to consider, to build this at the lowest cost possible without making any cost, costly to plant that's not viable. But anyway, I just want to say that I'm concerned about this. I don't know how many other sites we have left, but the more delays, the more the costly, and I'm like everybody else, I'm going to get this done soon. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Dave Nelson? And then Terry Simons?
Hi, David Nelson. Well, we took a couple-month break here, and here we are. And where are we? We've got a plant that, two months ago, wasn't affordable for our town. Waited two months, we got a study here, bottom line is, we can't afford this plant. Why? This has gone from site planning to a project. I have been at many of these meetings over the last decade, and this project just morphed out of, we're looking, we're getting sites. Now we have this project that was, you know, on the denial list, as far as I'm concerned. Most of the technology is the same as it was. I've come here many times asking for the council to bring this to bid, get us a package. People are building these sewer plants all over the place. You've got a peer committee looking at a $167 million project telling us, "Oh, this looks pretty good. You can save, you know, maybe 20 or 30 million." We can't afford it. Even if they did that, we can't afford it. You've got all your data, you've spent the money to do this, take the data, put it out for bid, we want this, we want tertiary. You told me that $98 million, I'm going to get a secondary plant? Excuse me, that's outrageous. And as far as this Coastal Commission, the letter's here. Have you all read this? Let me just paraphrase a couple of things, you know? We are frankly shocked that the city would be considering such a radical change in strategy without even consulting us. That's one, you know? And another hot item here is, with all due respect, we would strongly advise continuing with the water reclamation process, blah, blah, blah. They're telling us, we're out of our minds. What's with us? I mean, you're going to go to the Coastal Commission after this letter and ask them to do it? Rob, good luck to you, or whoever has to go before them. And also, in the, you know, the recommendation's clear, but why, why can't you just go to perk? Why don't you just put this out to bid and say, "This is what we want. We want a tertiary. We want to do a million gallons a day. How much is it going to cost us?" There are packages. Go online, put in sewer systems. You'll see a number of companies. Give them a call. Just tell them what you want. I called them. I told them what we wanted, using numbers that I've heard here, and the cost will surprise you people. And the thought that you're not even bidding it out or taking it and calling this a project, when time after time, we're told we can't afford it, yet it's still our project, this is an ugly project. It was an ugly project six years ago when it was on a sewer plant, and this is not the newest technology available. In your study, it even says that there's no new technology available out there. On page 22, I believe, number 10 is the number on the document.
I have to ask you to conclude, Dave.
But it even tells you that you can't do it.
Thanks, Dave. Terry Simons? And then Diane Plan?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Terry Simons. I'm a Morough Bay resident. I've been here several times to speak on this issue, although I feel like I've come late to the party, since I only have been talking to you about this for the last year or so. I do support a good faith interaction between our staff, the Coastal Commission, and Regional Water Quality Board. I think that there is a possibility, number one, you must show total water recycling to both Regional Water Quality and the Coastal Commission to think that they're even going to listen to you. If you keep backing away from doing the right thing, and the right thing is water independence and water recycling, you will not get the traction that you need with either Regional Water Quality or the Coastal Commission. So, don't take them a proposal that does not include complete water recycling. It's the smart thing to do. The water recycling is one of the benefits of doing this project. It actually makes money. So, it defers state water costs, and it provides water independence. I was interested to hear one of the last speakers say that there may be grants available if we recharge our water and help rebuild the water table. So, I think that's an absolute plus. I'm glad to see that the city's taking advantage of local knowledge, the peer group, council. I've worked with a lot of the people that was on the list of the people there, and I know that they've been in the business locally, they understand local politics, they understand getting these kinds of projects built and done. I'm a little surprised that we waited so late in the game to talk to those people, but at least we're talking to them now. My last issue is that I hope the council will continue to look to protect the existing citizens from the devastation of astronomical water and sewer rates. I was doing some demographic studies on the community, and I was shocked to find from the U.S. Census that 17% of the people that live in Morough Bay, the households of Morough Bay, are people 65 years and older and live alone on a limited income. La Sosa's has shown us that 30% of the people in La Sosa's are being economically displaced by the sewer water program that was forced on La Sosa's. I think it'll even be worse in Morough Bay. I think when you go to the Coastal Commission, I think you need to tell them that it's not just a water treatment plant or a wastewater treatment plant, it's actually the fabric of the community that will be ripped to shreds if this is not an affordable program. The Coastal Commission needs to help us preserve the viability of our community. That's also part of the Coastal Act. And so, if we're forced to create an economically unviable plant, we're going to drive out citizens and have a whole new crop of people, and that's a different story. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Diane Plan? And then Steve, oh, Steve Stevens?
Hi, I'm Diane Plan, I'm from North Morough Bay, and I want to thank everybody on the City Council and the mayor for listening to us tonight again. I am involved with the Citizens for Affordable Living. And the first person that came to my mind when I was going to start going around and trying to get people involved and know what's going on was Culligan, was My Beauty Salon, was anybody that uses a lot of water, Lemos Ranch, the self-shampooing for your dogs there. They're all going to have to triple their prices or leave town. I mean, they're not going to have a choice. There's, you know, it's really going to impact the citizens, but the businesses, I mean, Foster's Freeze, their ICE, they're going to, I don't think they'll be able to stay in business, and they've been there since my kids were little, and they're all, you know, in their 30s and up. So, that was my first concern, are the businesses, along with the citizens. Also, I'm hoping the guys from the Water Board that were here, Mr. Wolf and Packard, promised they were going to watch us tomorrow night, so hopefully it's on TV. And I'm just wondering, is, once Cayucus is off of our sewer, will there be less output, you know, that we possibly could find on? If we rebuilt at the same site, you know, we're going to have less sewer. We're going to, so there probably won't be as much of a problem with polluting the ocean if we have less sewer and we rebuild it there. And then, another thing that I was going to ask is the infrastructure. You know, I've been looking at these staff reports that have infrastructure with weeds growing through them since 2009, and seeping into, the sewer's seeping into our water basin, and is, on none of the slides did I see that that's included in the cost. I've been told it's included in the cost, but nobody's talking about it here, so I'm just curious if you could answer that question. Is our, you know, crumbling infrastructure included in any of this cost when we get the bids? And that's another thing. I'd like to see bids, again, with some expert, highly qualified engineers from Morough Bay included this time, instead of just people from out of town. It would be nice if we could see what they can do. They have a lot of great ideas. We have a lot of brilliant people in this town, and I think you guys should take advantage of it. I mean, they're fully vested in this, because they live here. So, I guess that concludes everything I have to say. Oh, and if there's any questions on the Coastal Commission meeting, I mean, you could play it. It's on the, it's online. You could just play it at one of the meetings and let everybody see what happened, if you can't recall, like, something that happened there. So, those are, you know, my concerns, and hopefully, you know, you'll be able to rebuild one that everyone can afford, and the businesses can stay here, because we're going to lose a lot of revenue as well if they leave.
Thanks. Steve Stevens? And then Alice Kolb?
Hi, I'm Steve Stevens. Thank you very much for everyone's effort here. I really appreciate also the peer review that took place and Rob's involvement there. I love your dramatic pauses, waiting for an answer here. Gets me on the edge of my seat here. I do want to say that I really would appreciate the city being more aggressive in terms of an outreach to the community. I'm surprised that, at this point in the project, or in the process, I should say, that there hasn't been some type of citywide survey relative to what citizens can afford. I'm very, very concerned that there is going to be a ripple effect relative to the increases that we're talking about here. I would definitely concur relative to the 218 ballot, if we have the discretion, to allow a protest being part of that ballot. I think that's respect, shows some respect relative to the, what our citizens can afford. And I would suggest that the recommendation that you made relative to Coastal Commission and putting together something that would mitigate their concerns, I think it's a matter of the intent of the city to work together with everyone, and especially those that have objections. But I think that financial considerations and what those that are not able to afford, you're talking about health concerns, I think the Water Board mentioned earlier, you know, there are going to be those that, in the community, they're going to choose between, do I pay my water bill, or do I have to pay, or am I able to afford prescription costs for my medicines? So, there's a ripple effect that occurs throughout the entire community, and I just would appreciate you be sensitive to that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Alice Kolb?
I live on Ponderosa Street. The report by the peer review panel is the first time in years that I've felt represented before the council. I fully support their assessment that leads to the conclusion that the wastewater treatment plant can remain located near its current location, and I strongly urge you to make that choice. In the hope that this occurs, I would ask what we can do to help facilitate a request with the Coastal Commission, such as letters, attending meetings. Let us know. We want to help have this happen. And please try to mitigate the issues with the Coastal Commission, so that we can have a wastewater treatment plant that produces affordable reclaimed water that we can use. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hayes. Jim, you're my last speaker slip. Is there anybody else for public comment?
I'm Jim Hayes, and I've lived in Morough Bay for quite a while. I actually worked at that plant for 12 years, and I was in the collections department for another nine, and in the streets. And I would like, and of course, I ran for council. And my stance, you know what it was. Everybody in town knows what it was. Build it where it's at. But it looks like all the sites have issues. So, I'm thinking, why not go with the current site? Just bite the bullet and go back and do something sensible. You guys have had a nice conversation tonight. I have had nothing but negative thoughts when I got up to talk about this before. And tonight, I don't. I don't. I feel pretty good. The stuff you guys have been saying's been good. Now, if you can just put it in gear and put it in motion, it'll work out. We can't afford what you're asking for. We've got to get off the yellow brick road and come back to reality. We can't afford it.
Thanks, Jim. Come on up.
Linda Donnelly, Morough Bay. So, we just got back from a wonderful vacation. We went up the coast and saw the redwoods, and one of the wonderful spots that we got to see was the wastewater treatment plant in Crescent City. I just want to say that it's one of the few plants like Morough Bay, well, not quite like Morough Bay, because it's actually on the beach. When we talk about this plant being on the beach, it's not on the beach. It's a quarter of a mile from the beach, or maybe, I'm sorry, maybe it's a half a mile, a third of a mile, I heard tonight. Crescent City wastewater treatment plant is on the beach. People walk around it, there's a park next to it. If nobody's ever been to it, it couldn't be closer from the water. So, when we talk about our beach being oceanside, I don't know where that little buzzword came from in the Tribune the other day, but it annoys me. I don't, I think our plant needs to stay where it is, only maybe overlook at the Hanson site. I don't agree that we need to move to this Tri-W site, or whatever we're calling that site now. We heard Rob Kitzman come up and talk about the devastation this would do to his business. And I think that's just one of the first businesses that we're actually hearing from. We haven't even begun to hear from the businesses that use water in this town, let alone the households. And I think you will start to hear that, the longer this goes on. I think we can do a site next to where it's at, that it would be protected from whatever people are calling tsunami. And I just want to say that I think, you know, two months might be nice, but we're not going to get, if you guys can get on the Coastal Commission's agenda in two months and have things gone to them, that'll be, I think, a little miracle, actually. So, anyway, I just want to say that where we're going is way too expensive, people can't afford it, and let's pull back, let's look at what we've got and talk about possibly the Hanson site. Thank you.
Anybody more for public comment?
Seeing none, all closed public comment. Bring it back to council. Thanks, everybody, for coming out and taking the time and following this and all your comments. For this point, we'll get into discussion, and Red, I was wondering if you'd start us off on discussion. And as we get into this, I'm going to do my best to write down notes as we do this, and then as we start formulating our direction and motion, as I said earlier, we'll be diligent and work with Dana to walk through that and make sure if we need to repeat all that, we'll go through that step. And if we have to do multiple motions to get everything done, we'll do that. But ready to get started. Did you have something, Marty? No? Okay, good. Red?
I'm just going to be very simple and direct. Based on what I've heard, I'm ready to go with the WRFCAC recommendation. Based on what I've heard, I'm ready to go with the WRF CAC recommendation.
Okay, thanks. Matt?
I too, I agree with you, Red. The WRF CAC recommendation, the two months. But however, the reality of the situation, I like what Rob's summation was, that we can put together this list and have a preliminary approach to Coastal. So I would like to put a little bit more of a, some more time in there for possibility. I don't necessarily want the end of the road and that's it, and we automatically go back to any of the other sites. So two months. And Rob, how did you word it, two months? And then see how it's going or test the waters or some other metaphor?
Maybe I said something like that, but I've had a little time to think about it. I don't think we have to have radio silence for the next two months with the council on what our status is with progress with Coastal. I think we can keep the council informed and tell you how it's going and have the opportunity to make course corrections over this next two-month period.
And likewise, besides this WRF CAC recommendation in terms of the two months and then looking back at South Bay, in terms of the other outreach that I mentioned during my questions, would staff be the ones primarily reaching out to some of those other supporting, not necessarily, public groups such as Surf Rider or Sierra Club? Would that be a staff thing to do? Or would council be doing that?
Got to keep Steve Stevens happy and have a good dramatic pause there. It's just to avoid saying "uh" is the reason I'm doing it. I think it could start with staff. But I think we need to engage at least the executive committee, the technical committee, helping us work with that. We will probably rely on some of our WRF CAC members also. So I think it's a multi-pronged approach.
Including council, that we would be putting our name, I think, if we do support this with these motions. And then that would probably perhaps might give it some more weight.
Yes.
If we, and likewise, in terms of, okay, I'm just trying to think of a different-pronged approach that we can do this and, you know, with all guns firing. And, okay, so no. With that, I'm prepared to, besides that one caveat of perhaps additional time, but I would go with WRF CAC's recommendation.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. Thank the peer review group for us. Appreciate the work that they did. Thank you, community, for coming out and supporting this meeting and is always giving your opinion. And for those of you that wrote in, thank you for that. I am supportive of the 60-day WRF CAC recommended look at the existing site area. However, also, I am very supportive of moving forward with an RFP for a design-build project that would include water reclamation to be developed in conjunction with the Regional Quality Board and input from the Coastal Commission. And that may be a separate discussion after this. But I do think that in order to get the cost down and looking at this as much as we have, there is no other methodology that we can use to get to where we need to be with regard to rates that will be viable for our businesses and our community members. And we've only just begun to hear from business. I'll mention a conversation with the hoteliers that I had in terms of the impact there. Tremendous. And I've asked for numbers, but those numbers will come in. Cost of doing business will be transitioned and transferred to customers as they come into the community. And that cost gets passed on to them. Rates go up for them. And our tourism business suffers, I believe, as a result of that. I spent a lot of time trying to vet this with other entities. I spoke with the president of Perk Water to get an idea of just what this kind of project might entail, not representing any commitments on the part of council, just calling as an elected official to get information. And I am convinced that using the RFP methodology with the design-build is the way to go and that we can get some very innovative projects at a much lower cost using this methodology. I also will say that the Regional Water Quality Board, I believe, has been very gracious to us, but that grace period's about to end. And it could be extremely costly to us if sanctions begin to come in. And so we need to get off, I was going to say get off the dime, but I'm going to say get off the dollar and move forward quickly with everything that we do from here on out, making good, solid decisions. Because I truly believe that we do have some latitudes, but we're the last waiver in the state of California. And that's not a position I want to be in. I don't want to be known for that. Oh, that's that guy from Morro Bay. They had the last waiver in California for their sewer plant. So I, again, to reiterate, I support the recommendation. I support moving forward with the RFP, using the design-build methodology for the project, involving, as I said, Coastal Commission and Regional Quality to help us with that. That may be secondarily a consideration after this issue that we look at. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, John. Marla?
Yeah. Well, I also wanted to thank the peer review panel for all of their hard work and for being so honest with us. I think it was very helpful to the process, and so I'm very grateful to them. So I can, first of all, I concur with their assessment that the current proposed plant at the South Bay site is way too expensive for the citizens of Morro Bay. And I don't like the option that is proposed here of keeping that site, but only doing Phase 1 with full secondary or even with tertiary. So I think that those would be a step backward. I fully support water reclamation and reuse. And I've expressed concerns in the past about doing it now. I think there's some reasons why it might be smarter to wait, at least until we get into building the plant, in part because the technology is changing. But also, we just have engaged in a one-water project, which is going to be looking at our total water portfolio. And it seems to me we ought to get the results of that first before we move forward with recycling. But I would be willing to give up on that. I would be willing to go along with the recycling if that's what it takes to get a plant built for less cost and possibly closer to the existing plant. I do support the WRF CAC recommendation to approach Coastal Commission staff, at least to determine the likelihood of building a plant there, of getting a permit. And I like your approach of trying to find out, certainly in the next two months, do they consider it feasible? What would it take for them? And I think that we're in a different position than we were four years ago. We didn't know what it was going to cost then. Now we do. And I think if we can explain to them the current situation in this community, how it's divided this community and how the people can't afford it, they may very well reconsider. But we can't be sure of that. We can't. I personally think that we ought to be looking at the Dynegy site there. I think it's on higher ground. And I don't think it's been looked at in detail. And I would like to see us do that before we settle on going to them with the Hanson plant or on the proposed plant where you were going to build it up by about four feet. But just in case that they are not receptive to our ideas, I don't think we need to, we should be waiting until then. I would like to get better information on some of our existing sites that were the alternatives that we rejected previously. Now, I don't know if the best way to do that is through a design-build approach, which that's the first I've heard, that a contractor might bid on three different sites. If you don't have a site, I don't see how they can do a design-build. But the three sites that I would like to see us get more, and I mean more and better cost information on, a site west of Highway 1, and I'm thinking the Dynegy, but maybe it's the Hanson Concrete. I'm not sure. Whichever one makes the most sense from a cost and practical and feasibility, being able to deal with the mitigations that would be necessary for the Coastal Commission. And second, the Rigetti site. And third, the Giannini site. And I believe that we have a lot of cost information in our facilities master plan, certainly for what the facility itself costs, for what recycling costs. The only variable is the location. And we know what the piping costs. So we know if we have to pipe. We know how much the pipes cost. We know how much a lift station costs. I would think we could get a better cost estimate with existing information. And I would hope we could do it in the next two months. But if the better way to do that is with an RFP, I'm willing to go with that, too. I just have not heard that before, that contractors are willing to do that, to bid on a project without a site. But that's something that could be explored. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Can I? Do you want to make comment?
Just one short comment. I just wanted to, you know, in hearing the Water Board speak tonight and then in speaking to them previously, I don't believe water reclamation is an option. I don't believe that we will be able to have access to state funding, nor do I believe that we'll have any opportunity with Coastal Commission and/or with the support of the State Water Board without it. So I just wanted to say, Mayor, I just do not think that is an option to not consider recycling immediately out the gate. Thanks.
I'm just writing my notes down. So thanks, everybody. Support WRF CAC recommendation. I'll start off with that. I want some clarity on the expectations of two months. I, when I get done with my conversation, I want to just make sure that we have that covered. As I mentioned earlier, my questions and following questions in recess, had a brief conversation with the Water Board members, Mr. Packard and Mr. Wolf, and just wanted to reinforce that we can't be disappointed. If we're setting the expectation for two months and we don't get that, we just can't continue to do that. So I'll get back to that in a minute. But we'll support WRF CAC recommendation. I have a similar draft motion. Marla's and Marla's subcommittee members have, you know, coordinated some of our conversations with, as a result of being on the subcommittee and talking with WRF CAC and some of the other conversations, and have similar thoughts in how we move ahead with exploring sites on the west side of Highway 1 as well. And I made some reference to the EIR for the, it was Duke Energy at the time. If there's going to be any kind of back-of-the-napkin type of estimate, if that EIR, and I imagine it's a public document, provides some information that, as we're looking at estimates or the reality of whether or not that's doable, I'd rather have at least a higher, a little bit more knowledge on some of the civil part that made that project work. And I also agree that the sites that were mentioned by Marla's, as far as the Rigetti site, Giannini site, have to be explored. We need to, we need to come back. And if we're talking about cost as the driver for this, if Coastal is not going to be willing and we're faced with the cost of the minimum cost possible, our community needs to know what those are. And we've done some estimations in order of magnitude, John, I think was your term. And those can work okay, but we need to have that drilled down a little bit more. And in regards to Crescent City's wastewater treatment plant, I've been to that plant as well. Interesting that, you know, hey, it's right there at the beach. People walk by it. Interesting because when we proposed a site location at Rigetti, it's much further from anybody even remotely walking by it. And we were dealt with huge opposition from the neighborhood on that. I get it. But if we want to explore costs, we need to explore what those costs are. And if we're faced with a Coastal Commission staff that is not going to be willing to work with us and we're solely looking at costs, then we need to know what all those are. So I would want to, I would support having come back with that menu. So staff updates. I did want to, and I know you mentioned, Rob, as far as, just because we're doing this two months, that we're not going to have updates. I have this in my notes that, you know, we're going to have some updates based on this. We'll have some updates at, you know, the next council meeting and the next council meeting. It's not going to be waiting for two months. We'll have those conversations. And I know you went over that. I wanted, so I have a number of things I'm talking about, but we have two months here. So I'll get through my menu and we'll have that discussion of list of things that we may want to see done in two months. And then we need to determine what of those we're going to be able to get due in two months to accomplish what we want. Because my other question was to have staff evaluate all our outreach options and prepare for further discussions with the community on the results of the requested items. I know we've heard that, hey, we haven't done a good job with outreach. Outreach is tough. The only, in my five years of experience, the only time we have a good crowd is when there's an issue that has to do with cost or a police department. And, you know, maybe it's just we want to have a discussion and talk about it. But if we get the idea something's really going to happen, people come out. Yet we start talking about our budget and we don't get many people come out for a budget. And that's pretty darn important. So those are my comments there. But we do, I think we do provide and we do have an effort and put that effort forward on outreach. So I just have to acknowledge the effort that goes into that and staff's work on that. And before I forget, I think we need to acknowledge our WRF CAC Citizens Advisory Board for the work they've been doing over the several years. Our WRF CAC, thank you very much. You have taken on our community members. I don't view you as a shield by any means for us. You've done a great work. You've been, there's some great technical people that have been providing great information for us. And I just want to say thanks before I forget. So I don't need to go any further. I think we need to wrap in a motion and then, and then further comments? And with that, so I'll stop. Any further comments, Matt?
Yeah, the one thing that I am concerned about is we want to go all out on this effort. Is, and understanding, Rob, that you're talking about what you think and Jeff, what you think can be done in that two months, should we allocate more time than that? And I understand time is of the essence. But however, if this is not quite a last-ditch effort, but very significant, should we give it more than two months? I understand that's what WRF CAC's recommendation was. I totally understand that. I understand time is money, et cetera, et cetera. But putting this together, Rob, would you have any other suggestions in terms of, before we make a motion?
With any, we haven't really talked to Coastal about this yet. So we don't really have any more information that would inform. I could throw out six months. I could throw out three months. I don't know if that's any more viable than two months without talking to Coastal. I think we could.
So can I, let me comment on that real quickly. Because here's what I can see happening, that we go with the recommendation, WRF CAC recommendation. And, okay, we're taking a two-month pause, released in the news, two-month pause. And everybody in the community is saying two-month pause. And then we have our initial outreach with Coastal. And they say, we can get back to you in 10 weeks. And then at the next meeting, you say, hey, we can't make it in two months, but we can make it a few weeks later than that. So I don't want to be, I don't want to, you know, get on So I don't want to be, I don't want to, you know, get into this and then say, "Okay, we've announced we're giving it a two-month pause," and they're saying, "Well, you know, it's really going to be two and a half months, and we can do it in two and a half months." So, you know, those are the things that I think we face, and the community gets, and council, everybody, I mean, staff included, we're, okay, well, we talked about two months, and it didn't quite work out. So I know it's not going to be perfect, but I think that the recommendation to seek out Coastal input is the general consensus. The time, I guess what I would ask is that you come back to us under the premise that we want to have it done in two months, but back in our next council meeting by August, we will have some feedback on what that time will be. And if we say, "Hey, we're looking at two months," we're good. But if it's two and a half months, that will know that. I'm asking, and I'm suggesting that, and I'm looking for staff feedback and feedback from council on this.
Well, let me start. I think the direction we took from WRFCAC and what we're hearing here is you want timely feedback. To call it a pause, I think, isn't quite right, because pause suggests you're doing nothing. I think we're going to do a lot of things in that time, which will involve, if I'm hearing this, some sort of outreach, regular communication with council, active engagement with Coastal to the extent we can, providing more information with respect to enough design information to allow for meaningful conversation with Coastal, exploring potential sites, Hanson or Dynegy, for possible action along those lines, having in our back pocket the idea of Gianini and Rigetti on the detailed costing as backup concepts. I'm just throwing these out, but this, these are the notes I'm taking. It's an active set of things within a timely timeframe. We'll be reporting back in about two months to tell you what we've learned, and we may need to go beyond that, but we'll see how that goes.
Ready for a motion? Just one moment before we get into that. And so, as we get into a motion, John, I just want to clarify, so we, the motion could be, we move forward on, not necessarily with WRFCAC recommendation, but feedback from Coastal Commission, and we get some timely response from council, from staff, on what that time might be. The goal is two months, but we want to be realistic. If they say, "Hey, due to schedule, we can make it in two and a half," we just, I think it's prudent of us to at least go there. So, John, if you have a motion and want to start, that'd be fine. And then, I just want to remind us, sorry, as we go into this, Dana is kind of, is helping us, so I'm just, yeah, thank you.
Going to go slowly. So I would move that we direct staff to immediately begin discussions with the California Coastal Commission and Regional Water Quality Control Board to determine the feasibility of constructing a wastewater treatment facility and WRF at or near the existing WWTP site. Period. Additionally, and concurrently, staff should begin the process of evaluating costs associated with the Gianini and Rigetti sites and bring back information... within, also within, I'll say, 60 days regarding the costs for building on those sites.
Including the recycle?
Both, yes. WWTP and WRF, including recycling, yes. Additionally, staff should begin the process of determining outreach to appropriate environmental agencies and should involve either council and/or staff as appropriate to be involved with that outreach for the purposes of beginning to explore the recommendation as to a site alternative.
So let's take a pause. That was a long motion, and it might be helpful to break it down, but that's a good start. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Heading moved that we direct staff to immediately begin discussions with the California Coastal Commission and Regional Water Quality Control Board to determine the feasibility of constructing a wastewater treatment facility and WRF at or near the existing wastewater treatment plant site. Additionally, and concurrently, staff should begin the process of evaluating costs associated with the Gianini and Rigetti sites and bring back information within 60 days regarding the cost for building on those sites, including recycling, WWTP and WRF. Additionally, staff should begin the process of outreach to environmental agencies and should involve either council and staff as appropriate to be involved with that outreach for purposes of beginning to explore the recommendation as to a site alternative.
May I second?
We have a motion, and we have a second. It looks like we've got a second on that. Yeah. So we have, I think there needs to be, yeah, there's probably needs some polishing up a little bit. I do, I do believe there should be some polishing.
Can we start with just the separate pieces?
I believe so. I...
So I will move...
Can you withdraw the motion and withdraw the second? Just for a second. Let's just make sure we get this.
Sure. Well, withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw second.
Thanks.
Number one, I will move that we direct staff to take up to 60 days to begin the process of vetting with Coastal Commission...
Whoa. I'm sorry, can you back up a couple weeks?
To begin the process, you can just read back the first thing that I said, that's all.
Okay, just that first.
Yeah, I think the first paragraph would be a good, yeah. Break it down.
Okay.
Okay, so I can second that.
Right. Want to read it back?
Yeah.
The first...
Direct staff to immediately begin discussions with California Coastal Commission and Regional Water Quality Control Board to determine the feasibility of constructing a wastewater treatment facility and WRF at or near the existing wastewater treatment plant site.
Period. Then you want a second? You want to...
Yeah, so that's a good, that's a good one. Let's just break it down that way. So if we're in agreement, if that's a good motion, if you're good with that, if that's a good motion, do we have a second? So we have a motion by Mr. Heading, second by Red, and we're good on the motion. Any further discussion on that?
It's somewhat similar to the motion that I have. The change that I would like us to consider is the wording, "To construct a water reclamation facility on a site west of Highway 1 that has the least possible objections per previous Coastal Commission denial and report back in two months on progress." I don't want us to exclude a possible Dynegy site.
What word did I use?
I think you said "at or near."
At or near.
A site west of Highway 1, at or near.
A site west of Highway 1, at or near.
I know that.
Yeah.
Do I have to withdraw it again there?
So let's see.
At or near, west of Highway 1.
I just want to make sure that we have that as a possibility.
The mover amended the motion, and the secondor seconded?
I will second.
The amendment?
The amendment.
Okay. So, yeah, just let's, I think Dana may read this back, and let's see, make sure we get this.
Is it a site west of Highway 1, at or near the existing wastewater treatment?
Right.
Okay. I think I've got it. Do you want me to read it back again?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Direct staff to immediately begin discussions with California Coastal Commission and Regional Water Quality Control Board to determine the feasibility of constructing a wastewater treatment facility and WRF west of Highway 1 at or near the existing wastewater treatment plant site.
Perfect.
So we have a motion by Mr. Heading, a second by Mr. Davis. Discussion, Matt?
One thing that I would like to see done is, after our last Coastal Commission denial a number of years ago, there was a list of points that they made. And so in this motion, should we put some sort of wording to say, to address those failings of the last project?
You know what, let's do this motion, and then we can discuss that. We can do a separate motion, I think, and, yeah, I don't disagree. I just want to...
Sure.
Red?
Yeah. I listened to John describe his approach, and that was, that was his approach. So I'm perfectly comfortable that our staff knows what we want, and that they have a plan for doing that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, so that's one part of it. I know there's more out there, so let's see what we can do.
So, but also, I'll move that staff, within the next 60 days, evaluate costs associated with constructing a WWTP slash WRF at the Gianini slash Rigetti site and bring that back to council.
I'll second, just for purposes of discussion here.
So we have a motion and a second, and then we'll get into some discussion and see how, how we do reading this back. Your comments?
This is somewhat similar to my second part of my motion. I would also like them to prepare that same cost, and I have cost and feasibility assessments, so advantages, disadvantages of each site in addition to just the cost, and include the site that they're going to talk to the Coastal Commission about. So we have also the site, a site west of Highway 1, so whichever site that they're going to talk to Coastal about.
I think we've already done that, have we not? Advantages, disadvantages with the previous?
No, and the cost.
We have not done a detailed cost estimate on the existing site.
No, but also, I'd like the report to see also the feasibility at each site. So we understand the advantages and disadvantages at each of those sites in addition to the, some of that's already been done.
Much of that work is done. I think it's just a matter of recompiling that work and re-presenting it.
Right. Or if anything has changed.
All right, so do we need to add some of that detail to the motion? Can we have Dana read this back?
I have, Councilmember Heading's portion, I didn't catch everything you added, so...
Right, right.
Councilmember Heading moved staff within the next 60 days evaluate costs associated with constructing a WWTP slash WRF at the Gianini slash Rigetti site and bring that back to council.
Gianini and Rigetti.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And I just said, I added cost and feasibility.
Friendly amendment to add costs and feasibility.
And then I would like to see the costs of the site west of Highway 1 also.
We have not done that detailed cost estimate, so we're assuming that's part of the first motion, actually.
Oh. It is, it is in the first motion. Cost of the, yes.
Okay.
So we have all three sites to evaluate. Okay.
So the friendly amendment is to add and feasibility, to cost and feasibility.
Cost and feasibility, got it.
Okay. Yes, second.
Are we good on that? Do you want to read it back? You're comfortable?
Yep. Councilmember Heading moved staff within the next 60 days evaluate cost and feasibility associated with constructing a WWTP slash WRF at the Gianini and Rigetti sites and bring that back to council.
Okay.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so we've got a, we've got a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Anything else?
My last motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I, I just want to make one clarification on the sites, and I know I discussed that. I just want to reinforce my thought on this. Any site that we select and the plant will, it's going to be designed for our current capacity. I want to know that the site plan that we are looking at has the capability of expand, expanding and adapting to all the needs of, that will meet all the needs for full build-out of our general plan and LCP. And I just want to understand that there's, that if there's a, and what I'm getting at is, is there going to be, is the site going to be built enough to adapt for more flows? If our general plan says, "Build out is 12-5," in 20 years, if we build, you know, if we have another thousand people or our flows increase, can that plant be expandable by design? Or are we going to be doing it in such a constrained footprint that it can't adapt to full build-out? That's what I want to ensure.
We would not propose a facility that wouldn't be able to accommodate our LCP build-out, because that's what we do.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
My last motion is this, that we direct staff to bring back a recommendation on the feasibility of moving forward with an RFP for a design-build project, including WWTP slash WRF, once a site is selected.
I think you said, "Once a site is selected for the design-build," and so we have a motion and a second, discussion. I just want to get through discussion. Go ahead, Red.
Yeah, and I seconded it because I did want to discuss, perhaps, we haven't, none of our motions so far have been aimed at selecting a site. And I'm wondering if we, do we want to start a design-build RFP process now to get an idea of a cost and ask for all three of our sites under discussion to be evaluated?
Can we, so can we get some input on the RFP process based on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to just run through briefly what the, what the plan has been on the design build procurement. This is based on input from, from the city attorney and also from best practices from the Design Build Institute of America, which is one of the professional societies that's heavily involved with trying to develop fair procurement processes, working with contractors, public agencies, et cetera. So the current strategy had been if we had moved forward with, with South Bay Boulevard site, then right around the June timeframe, we would have been issuing the first step of that, that RFP process you're talking about. We would have issued first a request for qualifications for design build, and then that would have allowed design builders to submit their teams, their financial information, and then we can shortlist that to a few. And then take those shortlisted teams, meet with them, see their design ideas, work through them with a series of meetings in order to narrow those down and get ideally no more than three very good design build proposals following what's called a best value process, meaning you define what you're looking for in your project, you get far enough down the road, you know a lot of your permit conditions, and the contractors are all approaching things from, they're all meeting the same goals, but they're giving you different money or different dollars and different creative ideas to get there. But this is a process that's worked very well in California on other projects. There are a number of ways you can proceed with the design build, you can do what's called more of a quote progressive design build, that's where you involve the design builder early in the planning process. I could ask the attorney to kind of speak to their opinion on whether they, whether he, because we had this back and forth quite a bit when we were coming up with the design build process, so. Mr. Penoni?
The first approach you suggested is, from a legal perspective, a much better defensible approach. I'm talking to you, should we be talking to you? Sorry. The first approach that Mike discussed is the safest legal approach because it's, it's been used, the statute clearly lays out that process, and everyone then is working from the same goal and project, so you get very competitive prices. Using anything else branches away from that, and so as your legal counsel, I have less comfort as you branch away from what the statute lays out.
But as part of this planning effort too, one thing I would, is we'd be glad to come back and look at you with what that, you know, what that, that, what that, what that process would look like as part of this for more discussion.
Yeah, and if you could read it back, I think that's what I was asking for.
Yes, sir.
The information not to do it, but.
Yeah.
Go to read that back, and I could.
Moved, Councilmember Heading moved that we direct staff to bring back the recommendation on the feasibility of moving forward with an RFP for design build project including WWTP slash WRF once a site is selected.
So. Right, once a site is selected.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and I make that as an emotion, amendment.
So we have a motion and a second, and we've clarified once the site's selected. Yes, yeah, yeah.
When you say clarified, you mean?
We've taken that, we've stricken that, yes. Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm just unclear exactly on what we're going to have coming back to staff, so if we could, options for how we proceed, or an actual proposal, or, it's kind of muddy in my mind yet, what, what we're going to get at the end of this if we direct staff to do this.
What I understood is Mike and his team will come back with a laid out schedule and plan and detail of exactly what he just described, more robustly discussed.
So it wouldn't be the alternatives of, of going out for bid in a different way than what you've just suggested, like?
Tonight you are directing that you want to have this be a design build approach, that's what you're basically saying.
We've already.
We've already decided that, so that's.
He's going to come to you with a precise plan of what that's going to be.
And my real goal is to move it forward quickly and begin the process, that's what I'm trying to do, I know that that's what we're going to do, but I'm, time is of the essence.
I guess, can I ask a quick question as we go into this? Because that question's been out there a lot, and, you know, I know I've had the conversation, Rob, John, Mike, on design build, and part of the response is, through your explanation to get a competitive design build, there's the process that you laid out. What we heard from tonight was a contractor that said, "I can do that design build right now, tell me which sites, I can do all three of those that we just laid out." That's what I, that's what I heard, and that's what I've heard from others in the community that are wondering why we can't do that.
It depends on who it is that you're doing the design build for. As a general law city, you don't have an ability to design build, you'd have to design bid build. Because there's a separate statute that specifically says, however, for projects over a million dollars, I think it's a billion, maybe it's five million, here's a process you can follow, which is a design build process, but the statute lays it out.
Wow.
So I don't know if the processes that were discussed tonight by other people included that, but that's what you have to follow, and that's what Mike was describing.
So to my point, the gentleman that just approached us tonight that said, "Hey, I can come out and I can do a design build," legally you're saying we can't do that.
No, that's not what I said. You can, if you, if you want to have someone, if you want to have contractors do a design build on three sites.
Yep.
You could do that, but we need to go through the same statutory process.
Okay.
Which means you have to do the RFQ first, figure out who you want to have, submit the bids for the design build on those three sites, and then do it.
Okay.
Part of what you'd have to do for the three sites too, is you'd need to be able to provide the contractor what types of permit conditions they would expect for all three sites. You need to provide some sort of envelope within which they'd be building the facilities, just so you don't get apples to oranges.
Maybe even 30% construction.
So as a general law city, we're bound to this legal process and doing design build?
Absolutely.
Okay. Which I know we debated this and the way Kayukas is doing it, because of course, they don't, they're not, they're a community service district, so their process obviously is much different than ours, and, okay.
Yeah, and to provide a little more information too, very briefly on their, their process, the construction management at risk process that Kayukas followed, it's a little different. They can select a contractor based on no real cost information, right, Joe, for construction management at risk, just based on qualifications.
Yes, you could, but if you did that as a city, then every subcontract that that contractor was going to have to do, you'd have to go do a bid for.
Have individual contracts with everybody.
You'd have to bid at each one of those.
Wow.
As a general law city.
Okay.
So let me, let me just throw something in, just to clarify some words. What I'm hearing, and Mike helped me, is we've already laid out a process for design build. What you want to know is, I think, is what more do we need to know or present or information we need to have, such as we have in the facility master plan, to be able to do that simultaneously for three sites, or four, whatever number of sites? What do we have to develop to get there to be able to put that out? Is that?
Or could I ask one more question? Is the, is the question more, what's the quickest way we could get to a design build process?
That's correct, I am trying, it's all about time.
And us lay it out for you.
That's right.
Okay.
That's, I don't want to wait 60 days and then.
Yes, sir.
Here, now we're going to start looking at design build, et cetera, I want to go concurrently.
Okay, I think we, I think we got that. Yeah, I think we got that, all right. So does, does the motion match the outcome?
Yes.
There you go. Okay, you comfortable?
I'm comfortable.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. So.
What I also heard was originally you had a discussion about outreach, that was a part of your original motion.
I, I laid out some, some discussion on outreach, and so the other thing I just laid out as well is, as expected, there's, we're asking for a few things here, and I just, we need to have feedback of the realities of being able to achieve all that, and if we, so the RFP, that's something that we can come back with, is, it would make sense to me as something we can do. The first motion was the, being, going to Coastal Commission and Regional Quality Board, that's, that's a given, and then the second is to be able to come back with cost estimates for the three sites combined. Well, it's all included in that. So I just want to make sure that the reasonability, time to work for our staff to be able to do this and set expectations that can't be achieved, and I just want to get that feedback.
I just saw a head nod over there.
Okay.
From our program manager that it is feasible for our team to do this.
All right, thanks. And so the original motion where we were asking for feedback from Coastal doesn't, was as soon as possible, we didn't necessarily tie the two months to it, but we said 60 days? Yeah. Yeah.
But I'm assuming staff will be in a position to come back at the first meeting in August and give you an update of where things are.
Right, generally speaking, we're not going to say, oh, we got 57 days to start. We're going to start right away and whatever we can accomplish soon and late.
I guess my point was, you know, the public thinks, you know, in 60 days, we're going to, you know, have an answer on this, and, and I just don't want to have that expectation if it's not achievable.
Just so we're absolutely clear, we will not have an answer from Coastal, we'll have an answer from Coastal staff.
Yep, yes.
We won't have an answer from the Coastal Commission until we go to a hearing.
I understand that, okay. All right, we'll go with it, and any further, so the outreach question, I think is not something necessarily constrained to time, but just have, evaluate our outreach options during this process. So we're going to come back, we, one, we need to, we're going to evaluating what these costs are, what they look like. So when we do that, we need to have the appropriate outreach to have those discussions. So I just want to understand that we are evaluating, evaluating what our outreach options are to prepare for further discussions with the community on the results of the council requested items. And it could be a motion if you want, I just, I'm, I'm just, you know, asking that that be one of our goals as we go through this.
If I may, is that, are you saying outreach of the city to outreach at the Coastal Commission and outreach to the environment, to the environmental groups?
Have staff evaluate all the outreach options to prepare for further discussions with the community on the results of the council requested items. So as all this comes back, what, you know, we, we need to have some focus and options on, on what our outreach is going to be.
That sounds like a motion.
Okay, it's, you know, direct staff to evaluate all outreach options and prepare for further discussions with the community on results of council requested items.
One thing I'd want to add, and I think you're, I think you're asking for more than just evaluating the options, there, there are going to be certain forms of outreach that are obvious and we can do, reporting to council, for example, or WRFCAC. There are certain things which we heard tonight, I'm not sure we want to do them or not, for example, a community survey. But then there's other things which we have done, workshops and such. So you're asking, I think, to think of the universe of outreach, consider the ones that are most appropriate to get the questions or get the reporting back to the community from what we're learning, and then ask you to go forward, get your blessing on one or another forum, or just do it? That's, that's my question.
We're going to, I, I don't know the answer. I just want to understand that we have the outreach capabilities to discuss all these things, whether it's a workshop, I just want to be thinking about what forum are we going to have to have this? It could be another notice public meeting, but notice public meetings, as we know, are just that. Whether it's a flyer or whatever, we need to, we need to have some outreach options other than just noticing a meeting that we're going to discuss three alternative sites.
My recommendation would, we would bring back, as we communicate to council over this next two month period, a process to give that information, get that information out to the public.
Okay. So the, the motion was, Dana and I, hopefully I read it quickly, but it says, "Direct staff to evaluate all outreach options and prepare for further discussions with the community on results of the council requested items," was my motion.
And bring back to council.
And bring back to council.
Yeah. I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, motion, Mayor Irons, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion, any comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. Shall we conclude this item? Yeah, thank, thank you all, thanks, thanks, everybody for working with us on that. So item C2 is, is next on the agenda, so item C, C1 is concluded, item C2 is the next item on the agenda, discussion and direction regarding Harvard Advisory Board request to work to resolve ambiguities in Measure D and recommendations on Morbay Working Waterfront Initiative. And this is Mr. Andersby and Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mayor Irons and council. Scott is queuing that up, thank you. So I'm going to lead in with a little preamble regarding Measure D. It's recognized that Measure D has some ambiguities by the city council, planning commission, staff, how it's been administered over the years, we received both criticisms and praise over the decades that I've worked for the city of how Measure D has been administered. And what we're really looking for is clear policy and implementation guidelines that the community can support by way of the general plan, the local coastal plan update. There's certainly no devious attempt to bypass public process of the Brown Act. Committees and ad hoc committees are a pretty standard way of conducting the city's business and an efficient way of doing it, to the contrary of being devious and behind closed doors, we want to be as open as possible. Maybe my staff report could have been a little more clear, but what we really want is an open and clear and public input process that can get some sort of policy and implementation guidelines in the general plan, local coastal plan. The committees work that will, if we engage in this, will include members, can include members of the public, our Harvard Advisory Board, several ad hoc committees we have do have members of the community, and we welcome them if we can get engaged and active members that want to be committee members. The output of these committees will go to a joint Harvard Advisory Board and Planning Commission meeting, so that's another public venue that will vet this, these issues, and that information eventually comes out of the Planning Commission, Harvard Advisory Board, and go to the GPAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee, another public process, and eventually make its way back to the city council when the general plan, local coastal plan come to you for eventual consideration. So lots of public input opportunities here, so I just wanted to lead off with that. So our purpose tonight is receive city council input and direction on the Harvard Advisory Board's recommendations that they've made over the last few months regarding Measure D and the Working Waterfront Initiative, which are very much related in part and parcel to each other. We'd like to obtain council guidance on process to address the above issues and ensure that our efforts are on the right path as council has envisioned. I'm not anticipating getting into deep and dark discussions on Measure D and Working Waterfront. What I see is looking for, like again, council sort of stamp of approval and guidance on the process as we move forward and how we move it into Harvard Advisory Board and Planning Commission and on into the general plan process. Recommendation wise, we'd like the council to consider the HAB's requests with regard to the ambiguities in Measure D and the Working Waterfront Initiative and provide staff and HAB direction, approve a process and approach, approve the process approach recommended by staff to address these issues, which I've kind of talked on a little bit earlier in terms of work output going to the GPAC and then eventually Planning Commission and on to the city council. to the City Council. As an alternative, obviously you can direct other measures, activities, or actions other than what we'll discuss or what we're recommending tonight as council sees fit. Fiscal impact, we don't see at this point indirect fiscal impacts. These are work programs that we're currently working on with Planning Commission, GPAC, and Harvard Advisory Board, so business as usual in terms of fiscal impact. Breaking it up into the two components, Measure D, the 1981 citizen enacted ordinance restricting waterfront lease uses between Beach Street and Target Rock to those serving or facilitating commercial and recreational fishing. Some of Measure D's language ambiguous and again, open interpretation, and the HAB recommendations and input provided, were provided in a letter and report from the HAB Chairman Ron Council, which is in your agenda packet. I won't go into great detail on those. Measure D is a 2017-18 City Council goal objective, objective foray that the HAB Working Waterfront Ad Committee, Ad hoc Committee worked with staff consultants and the GPAC to provide input and review relative to clarification of these ambiguities in Measure D. Background on the Working Waterfront is, again, HAB recommendations and input provided in a report from HAB Chairman, HAB Chairman Ron Reisner. Working Waterfront has been a two-year council goal objective with work plan elements that we worked on last year, culminated in several Harvard Advisory Board recommendations that again, were provided for in your council packet tonight. The most latest development of the work product that the Harvard Advisory Board had was coming up with a Working Waterfront Mission Statement, which we've provided again in your packet and then a couple of follow-on recommendations as well. For discussion, again, the HAB's requesting and recommending that it be involved in resolving the ambiguities in Measure D, the two that have been identified to date, which are pretty much where the crux of the matter lies, or what does quote-unquote primarily mean as it relates to purposes of serving or facilitating licensed commercial fishing activities or non-commercial recreational fishing activities? And the second being what does quote-unquote clearly incidental thereto mean as it relates to the above mentioned purposes? Different measuring sticks obviously can be added to those and it's been interpreted differently over the years and we've, as a department, done our best to interpret in the spirit of Measure D and as we implement lease and other activities in the Measure D area. Planning Commission and the General Plan Advisory Committee, the GPAC, are concurrently working on Measure D issues as well as they work through their work on the general plan, local coastal plan. On the Working Waterfront end, again, the HAB's recommended a Working Waterfront Mission Statement. I don't know that I need to go unless you want me to, and do the reading, the whole mission statement fairly lengthily, did a fair amount of work on it, went down several paths last year in trying to develop some policy and guidance that as we move forward in that goal objective, culminated again in this mission statement that we've recommended. The Harvard Advisory Board further recommended that they wrap up this Working Waterfront work into the general plan, local coastal plan work, came up with some more definitions in terms of what the Working Waterfront area would entail, from Target Rock to State Park Marina, and then came up with a fairly long laundry list of land uses that would be in the Working Waterfront idea, everything from, you know, typical boating and other things to commercial recreational fishing, processing, aquaculture, power production, all sorts of things. And there's the last of their list there, so HAB's recommending that those things get taken into account when the general plan, local coastal plan update moves forward. In conclusion, and I've worked with Community Development Director Scott Graham on this and developing this process as well, the Planning Commission and GPAC are concurrently working on Measure D and Working Waterfront issues and it makes sense that the Harvard Advisory Board work that we're doing on the same issue should be complementary and non-duplicative. In other words, let's not duplicate efforts and waste people's time and money. Staff recommended approach that be approved where the HAB, ad hoc committee members provide input to Planning Commission ad hoc members and vice versa. Again, as was brought up earlier, cognizant of the Brown Act, if we have any sort of meetings that would be Brown Act meetings, obviously we would notice those. We don't envision that, we envision committee work that would be fed into those Brown Act meetings into the future, again, those being Planning Commission and general plan, or GPAC, and those brought forward into that process. Also, working with the consultants of the general plan, local coastal plan updates to make sure that we're all working concurrently, not working against each other. So, we're seeking council endorsement of the process approach or any additions or modifications to it. We're also seeking council general input on the Harvard Advisory Board's Measure D and Working Waterfront recommendations. Again, since this will eventually work its way back to the City Council, we don't see a need for going into great Measure D detail at this point. We know what the issues are and we know where we want to go with it, so we just want to make sure that we're on the right track and that we are going in direction the council envisioned when we put all this into the goal-setting process. That's probably about it.
All right, Eric, thanks.
Got some more written down here in hand, written, but I think I covered it.
All right, so, questions from council, and then I've got two speakers' lips for public comment, so, questions? Matt?
Yeah. Eric, in terms of knowing the GP and the LCP concurrently are working and with these ad hoc groups, what's, what do you think the timeframe would be to work on this and deal with this? And I mean, we were going through this today, talking about the general plan, so what do you think is the timeframe on this?
We, as an ad hoc committee with the Harvard Advisory Board, would start working and are working right now on it and would continue to work on it. I'm going to slide the microphone over on here to Scott since he's running the general plan, local coastal plan show and knows better when, how that process would fall out. We talked a little bit about planning for the joint meeting with the Harvard Advisory Board and Planning Commission, that'll probably be in the next month and a half or so.
And there's a couple of different options for the way that might work, might have two members of the Planning Commission be a subcommittee that will be working on this. And the idea would probably be, do you have one meeting where they go to a regular Harvard Advisory Board meeting and work with the Harvard Advisory Board there and then maybe a couple of members of the ad hoc committee go to a Planning Commission meeting, work through that, then have a joint meeting with the full boards and then bring something forward that goes into the general plan and LCP update process. It is something that was identified by both your general plan advisory committee and Planning Commission as an issue that needs clarification. And so, I think I referenced it earlier as part of the land use discussion that we had earlier, and so, the HAB sees that as an issue as well, and so, that's, we're trying to facilitate that and bring the, all the boards are looking at it together so we're not, again, as Eric indicated, running down different tracks.
And likewise, in terms of the Measure D language in the general plan and then the working, where do you envision, knowing, reading the Measure D verbiage in there today, where would the Working Waterfront descriptions, where would that go? Would that go in the same area?
Working Waterfront is, you know, at least in general, has been talked about both in the general plan and I would imagine, depending on how we roll that out, when you talk about uses on the ground, I don't know that we're going to have the laundry list of uses that were described by Eric, because our land uses that we're going to be putting into the zoning code are really going to be more categorized, not as specific, not like every single use you could think of, it's more like uses that are similar to X are going to be in there. It's a little bit better way to use zoning and it's, it's more conducive to different types of uses as opposed to having those huge lists, but that's sort of how I see it working.
Okay, and I guess that makes me think of the question, when you think of Measure D from Beach Street north and then understanding the uses of that area and then understanding the Working Waterfront and the little pockets as it goes back along the Embarcadero, back almost to the State Park Marina. So, I guess when you talk about the various land uses, that's what you're really talking about, because Measure D is only that little segment and then the Working Waterfront is going to include the longer stretch of that piece of property?
Two separate concepts, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all my questions.
Thanks, Brad?
No questions.
Okay, any discussion, okay, any questions? Okay, all right, Brad, yeah, no, go ahead, Marloes, that's what it's about.
Well, I do want to get clarification about the Brown Act in terms of what is being proposed and is it, are we trying to circumvent it or is this actually a way to have communication that does not in any way violate the Brown Act? Is that an issue here?
I didn't hear anything in the description that they provided that was going to create a violation of the Brown Act.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, literally, we're going to have, we might have a couple of members of Harvard Advisory Board going to a notice hearing at a Planning Commission meeting and the other way as well, and that's just so we don't have several different special meetings with the whole board, both boards there.
Right.
That gets kind of complicated and cumbersome and can be fairly long and the Planning Commission meetings are already fairly long. So, we'd want to be judicious in the application of having joint special meetings of the board.
And, and the Planning Commission has been consulted and they also agree with this idea?
The Planning Commission wants to work on it, they'll be consulted at their next meeting, which is next week.
Okay.
Basically, that's when we would identify two members that would be working on.
And who would select those members?
The Planning Commission would. They were going to select their subcommittee members to be part of that. That's basically how the HAB did it.
Okay, and then my last question, when you talk about clarifying the ambiguity in Measure D, is this kind of a clarification that would require going back to the voters?
That's not the intent, no. That language will stand by itself and that will remain in our zoning code unless there's some direction by the council to the contrary, meaning go out and, whatever we come up with, go out and see if you can't get voter approval of that. Sort of you saying that, no, that's not the intent. We fully understand that the voter voted that in and that's what it says, but for use purposes, we feel that it needs to be better defined and that'll be what the city thinks it means. It's not going to tell everybody else what they need to think it means, that's not the idea behind that.
And so, the goal will be to interpret and clarify
Yes.
The words that are in Measure D. It's not to amend Measure D, it's to clarify and interpret it.
Right, and to get, like I said earlier, policy and implementation guidance in the general plan, local coastal plan, that the community has been involved with in this whole plan update, that the community can stand behind, because I want, when I make a use decision in Measure D, I want to know that I'm not just on my, happens to be my interpretation, I want the community to be able to stand behind it and through a vetted process, so that's my goal.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I don't think I have any questions. Betty, public comment? And I've got Barbara, but she's not here, so it just looks.
Two people left.
Okay, because it's getting late, yep.
Betty Winholz, first, the term Working Waterfront, going from the rock down to the State Park Marina is such a misnomer and as a public member, I resent you misrepresenting who we are on the water. And so, my feeling is you're calling it the waterfront because everything on the water, but everything on there is not working. I mean, when you think of the word working, you think of jobs and business, you know, it's, and when you put that with waterfront, you're thinking of fishermen and commercial, but you can't go, talk about going past the residential area as a working waterfront. You can't talk about, you know, going in front of all the, and you do, you assume that all the visitors serving is working waterfront. There's nothing working about that. I mean, you've put, you know, slips out there, but that's not working waterfront. So, I just want you to know that I really don't like the misuse of that word, because I think it's misleading. And maybe you're doing it for PR reasons and I get that, but I still don't like it. Personal opinion. The other thing is Measure D, in my mind, has no ambiguities. I think primarily is a very distinct word and we know what primarily means and the word incidental is a very, again, very clear definition if you look up Webster's, and I think what you are trying to do is redefine parts of Measure D indirectly and by circumventing having to go back to the people. So, I'm very much against this and I think it's wrong. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Barbara's not here, so we'll go into discussion and with that, I'll start off a little bit of the conversation as well. So, in looking at this, and I'm going to respond to some of Betty's comments as far as my understanding at this process that we're going through for the Working Waterfront and the way it was laid out, there's three zones to the Working Waterfront, based on what they've worked out. In an essence, whether it's called a Working Waterfront A, B, or C, this is still a draft, this is still developing, that's the way I understand it. It's going to go through this process, through this subcommittee team and the GPAC and to work out all these languages as it's laid out, that's the way I understand it.
Absolutely. Right now, it's been simmering at the HAB, it hasn't run through the General Plan Advisory Committee nor has it run through your land use body, which is your Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Haven't seen it, so.
And, and looking at this, there's really, so I kind of envisioned a couple of things happening, and I'm not saying this is what I think should happen, but it's just for me to understand, is that because there's, they've worked it into three sections of a Working Waterfront and basically all the information in there, there's some pretty detailed information that if this continues through the process with the Planning Commission, Harbor, GPAC, there's some pretty detailed information that will inform perhaps updating our waterfront master plan, as I see it, because there's some fairly good work that's already transpired in this. Would that be fairly accurate?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the whole purpose of doing this, that, yeah, we're hoping to produce information that is useful to that process, that can be incorporated into that process.
And so, the other, the other comment I have on that then, I guess what I'd like to see as far as the Advisory Board or the team that's working on this, having developed or appointed some subcommittees and working groups, Citizens Advisory Group, I'd like to bring it back to council, I'd like to have the Harvard Advisory Board and the Planning Commission and go through that discussion on what our roles and responsibilities are and what the mission is of this, and I think we need to do that. I think we've kind of sent off some teams like this and then it's like, what are we really doing? What are our expectations? And then we get feedback from Advisory Board members on what is, what is it we're doing? And actually, when we started out with a Working Waterfront, there was a little bit of that going on, so I'd rather have kind of some input as a council on appointing that Advisory Board and have that discussion on what we feel our priorities are for getting that done. Those are my comments on working forward on that. But as far as designating a Working Waterfront, I think, so for explanation, it's in draft form, having initiated kind of the Working Waterfront conversation early on, it largely was focused on Measure D area. The Harvard Advisory Board said, hey, we've got all of this, it's a Measure D area, it's a Working Waterfront. So, I kind of, I see that the descriptions that we're working on, I don't feel is redefining Measure D, but using the Measure D language to set, to set a policy document. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what we're going to get out of this and we're going to have our Planning Commission, Harvard Advisory Board, GPAC ensure that, based on that language and history, that our policy is going to reflect that Measure D language. And so, if there's ambiguities, we go to the policy and it says, hey, we've defined this. So, if Eric's not here, sorry Eric, that we have a policy document that somebody said that can carry it on, I don't mean it that way, but I mean, you know, there's a legacy to that and I mean, and we've had, and sorry Eric, I feel like I could joke with you about that, but, you know, but, okay, hold on. So, but I mean, I mean that, you know, there, there needs to be some legacy in memorializing that and I, and I think that's part of the conversation, so I'm not going to joke about that anymore, but that was, you know, you understand what I'm saying, but I guess those are my comments and I was going to look for John and maybe Marloes to continue the comments.
So, I, I, I'm not sure, I think I heard you say that you wanted, you thought it should come back to City Council for approval of the subcommittee members and my opinion is, is that we've allowed all of our other committees to appoint their subcommittee members, I don't feel the need that I have to support it or approve it, so I would disagree with that. But secondarily, I do feel it should come back to City Council. So I would disagree with that, but secondarily, I do feel it should come back to city council and that we would have the opportunity to review whatever the output is at the end of the process, so.
That's how the process works. You get to make the final decision. Yeah, so it would circle back through the process, and it might go, we might have one or two joint meetings between HAB, planning commission, and/or GPAC, just depends on how it works, but then it would funnel back through planning commission, because that's how you get changes to your land use. It comes back through the planning commission with recommendation to city council. So that's how you see it. If you want to see it sometime before that or have some other input process where you meet with that board, have a special meeting or something, definitely let us know, because we need to do some planning on that.
That's fine, yeah.
Red? Sorry, Red?
I'm good with staff direction.
Okay. Marloes?
Well, I think it's a good idea. I'm not clear on when we would be seeing something back from this, from this process. Is it going to be in the general plan? Is that why GPAC is involved?
That was how we envisioned it. I mean, we're rewriting the entire general plan, the entire LCP, and the entire zoning code. So these are all efforts that are underway right now, and we're going to roll it into that. I mean, I guess if we got to a point where we needed additional direction, we could bring it back, or you could have a special joint meeting and sit down with the HAB and the planning commission and hash some of that out if you want. I mean, that's certainly available.
I just wanted to understand why GPAC was involved in the process unless it was involved the general plan and the general plan update, that's all.
And it was an issue, this, the measure D clarification was an issue of the general plan advisory committee, as they've had several discussions about working waterfront language, both in concert with the general plan update, but also with the downtown waterfront strategic plans in draft format.
Okay, yeah, then I can also support staff recommendation.
Jamie, could I make a question?
Sure, go ahead.
One reason that this is very, I think, important is that harbor, harbor advisory board, they very much feel the need for measure D and want to continue it.
Totally support it.
And so with that, that's why they're very adamant about being involved with this and didn't necessarily want to
Pass it off.
Abdicate to someone else.
Yeah.
And so in terms of their request to work with planning and then to take it to GPAC and then come bring it back to us, I really think it's protecting the chain of how this, these things will be created, and also it protects the harbor with their necessary, their strong interest being on the harbor board. So definitely support staff's point of view on this.
Okay. So I guess from this standpoint, we, there were some, a couple of questions on where we're going on this, and I just want to clarify, staff recommendation, city council consider harbor advisory board requests, recommendations regarding ambiguities in measure D and the working waterfront initiative, and approve the approach recommended by staff. And that approach, as laid out, I'm sorry?
S11.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go beyond 11 o'clock.
I'll second.
We have a second, a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Time cert, in five minutes, okay?
Yes.
Five minutes, okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
4-1.
4-1. Okay. Thanks, guys. We're trying to get there, I'm sorry. So I just want to clarify the work approach, approach, staff seeing council on input, measure D and working waterfront measurements. So basically, you just want staff recommendation is basically is what we want to do on this.
Yeah, and the process outline where the
Right.
PC works together, goes to GPAC, goes back to council.
Right.
And I just wanted to explore the, so I guess there wasn't, there wasn't much buy-in on council interaction on appointment for that board. That's what I got out of my comments.
We weren't suggesting to appoint a board.
I was.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah.
You mean to appoint the visitees?
No, I guess the general, the conversation I had on that wasn't, it was necessarily, I, no, is having that conversation with the harbor advisory board subcommittee and the interested parties on PC for that and discuss the approach with them and have those conversations, only in that we've, my experience, we've done that before and we've started down that path, and there's been the feeling that we haven't had clear buy-in from council, and I guess I just wanted to have that conversation and take that approach. And that was my only comment on that. And if, you know, if there's no support on it, we can move on to staff, staff recommendation, and that's all I'm, that's all I was mentioning. So other than that, we'll take a motion.
First of all, do we, I don't necessarily, do we necessarily need a motion?
I would suggest you make a motion. Motion as requested or recommended, as recommended in the staff report.
All right. You, Matt, you want to make a motion, staff recommendation?
Sure, sure, I'd like to make a motion to follow staff's recommendation on this matter.
Okay, we need a second?
I'll second that.
We got motion by Matt and second by Red. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay, thanks. And then moving on, that, and we don't have item C3, so that concludes, and I stuck that somewhere so that my agenda is off somewhere, but that includes meetings, so...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, roll through item D. We are trying to schedule future meetings relative to the recruitment process. If you would please get back to us tomorrow, to Dana, I would appreciate that, and so would Dana.
Okay, will do. And with that, meeting is adjourned. Thanks.